Today is Thursday, May 25th, 2017. This is the Budget Workshop for the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Okay.
Play those deals.
You're on the speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. I guess I'd better behave myself.
Yep.
We're gonna do roll call.
Okay.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yo.
Councilman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shisk.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Lizelle will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everybody to our second day of Budget Workshops. Got a lot of ground to cover. We only got probably two-thirds of the way through yesterday, so we're gonna pick up from yesterday and continue today, and hopefully we can get done by noon time. City Mayor?
Mayor and Council at this point will kind of pick up where we left off. Lars, are we about to approach entering the world as a fire department? Is that where we are?
Correct.
All right. Did you want to do a general overview and then turn it over to the Chief to go into a little bit more?
Yeah, that's the plan. I'm just --
Specifics.
I'll just cover the budget changes real quick and point out a few things, and then Chief Light will continue. So, good morning. I'm Lars Johnson, Budget and Tax Manager. The Fire Department kept their budget relatively stable. The big increase here is the obvious PSPRS. The other changes you see under community risk reduction was a result of a few things. One is the three personnel that were moved. The fire inspectors and secretary were moved to the Community Development Division to take over that responsibility of fire and safety inspections. In addition, the seasonal fuels reduction budget for the general fund were moved to Parks and Rec. So, the capital here will be discussed in more detail, so we won't go into that. But really, another thing I just wanted to point out is the charges for services for the Fire Department comes from the contract with the Yavapai Indian Tribe for fire protection, as well as there's some other inspection-related fees that the Fire Department receives for their services. The tax baseline, you'll see the large increase there. Part of it is because in '17, we budgeted nine full positions in the SAFER grant. Then you'll see the '17 estimate column for the tax base went up slightly. That's a result of the SAFER grant not actually starting till the spring, so half of the year there was still expenditures in the general fund. And then the increase to '18 is a result of the PSPRS increase in contribution. The special revenue funds, well, that will show you what we're budgeting for both grants, you know, operating-type grants such as the SAFER grant, and then other wildland fire or hazardous fuels reduction-type grants. The enterprise funds, this $588,000 is the airport ARF protection that the Fire Department provides. I think this is one example why going to this model of department-wide presentation is a good presentation, is because the Fire Department now has SAFER grant and they have airports. So, you can see what the total budget is for the department rather than just focusing on the general fund. The next slide, I'm gonna go ahead and have Chief Light start on this one. There's some reorganization that he had presented here, so I'll let him take this and the rest of the Fire Department.
Well, first off, good morning, members of Council, Chief Light, City Prescott Fire Department. I'm pleased to present, I think, a budget that's very attainable and very manageable for us to move forward into the next fiscal year. As we commenced our work on this year's budget, a couple of things came to mind. First was the, where we could specifically to emergency services, and that's our operational, that's our point-of-service piece, was seeing where we could perhaps streamline some of those elements. And as you'll see, our organizational chart has actually dropped from three branches to two. It very much closely represents the Police Department at this present time, where we have emergency services, which is the primary points of service. That's the folks on the big red trucks, the ARF services, and all risk. And then we're continuing to maintain the Community Risk Reduction Division, which is kind of the safety arm of the fire service, allows us to be proactive in some of our efforts to not only manage fuels but public education. I'll get in a little bit more detail here in a bit. We did transfer three of the positions from Community Risk Reduction over to Development Services, as been articulated earlier. That includes a Plans Examiner Fire Investigator, pardon me, Plans Examiner Fire Inspector position, a Fire Inspector, and then a Secretary. So, those three FTEs have been moved over. Since that time, we also had a variable hourly employee who has decided in his best interest and in his personal decision to kind of remain on with the Fire Department as an auxiliary member, kind of foregoing a part-time opportunity with us, to stay with us in order to concentrate specifically on kitchen hoods and commercial kitchens. When we identified a trend about three years ago when I first arrived, I want to keep that impetus moving forward to ensure the welfare and safety of this, and that particular individual wanted to take that on. We do have a reclassification in our proposed budget. Specifically, we're taking what used to be a Divisional Chief for Professional Services Division and migrating that position with additional duties and additional responsibilities above and beyond the kind of the catch-all as other duties as assigned. These are program areas that this person will be taking forth. And it also creates a clear line of authority for a second-in-command within the department. So, the creation of the Assistant Fire Chief is done with an existing full-time equivalent. There is a salary increase of roughly probably about $6,500 to $7,500 for that position. It will be a level below myself and above Battalion Chiefs or Division Chiefs, and that's where that kind of fits. As far as our staffing today, as you'll see in our operational piece, emergency services, each of our three platoons or battalions, each has 19 folks assigned. That allows for a minimum staffing of 17 on duty and then two to meet operational needs, whether they be educational time off, paid time off, extended medical, those kind of elements. With that, we're able to staff five fire engines, the ARF truck, and a command officer, 24/7, 365. Another little point I'd kind of like to share, like my colleagues in law enforcement, we were starting to hemorrhage people, and I'd like to extend my thanks for the action on July 1st to move something forward in the compensation. It was meaningful, it was appropriate, and hopefully we're able to continue that upon budget adoption. So, with that, with the five fire stations and that particular deployment model, I was asked last year about this time, as we were, pardon me. As we were talking about station brownouts and challenges to providing service levels consistent upon what was normally predicated on this community of this size, I kind of went on the record saying, you know, I didn't really know if it was gonna create for a less safe environment. I think after having 16 months of station brownouts, I feel pretty confident through the data that we've obtained that the browning out of Station 73 does create added risk to this community, and we need to look forward to that should the opportunity present itself that we're faced with something similar to what we did in the fall of '15 where we had to roll back on employee numbers.
Chief, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You have five fire stations, and do the Battalion Chiefs rotate among those five? Or how do you distribute the 19?
The 19, there's three persons at each of the five fire stations for a total of 15. At Fire Station 73, which is the airport fire station, there is an additional aircraft rescue firefighting engineer assigned to the ARF truck. And then the Battalion Chief is housed out of Station 71 up on White Spar, and their responsibility is to run the entire shift. They respond to higher-level alarms above and beyond a single company, so they get engaged when there's multiple company operations, whether it be our own or through our partnerships with Central Arizona Fire Medical or other communities as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Chief, noting the growth to the north, do we have adequate coverage on the fire stations that we now have?
At the current model, I think we're able to provide service to the north area as it continues to expand. The station location, being where it is at the airport, is probably not the most ideal, but I think there's some economic considerations right now to offer that a relocation's probably not necessary, but I think from a staffing perspective, I think we can fulfill the demands probably out at least 36 months. That's a best guess. If the development takes hold and there's a surge in volume of calls, that might have to move up, or some alternative means may be needed, but for the time being, I think we're safe looking out probably 36 months.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Chief, if I could, just a quick question on this organizational chart. I was trying to find the correct term, because I don't know, I don't want to use the wrong terminology. Yesterday, we were told that, I'm gonna use the word fuel reduction, went to Joe's Department. Was it three or four?
Yeah, it's actually seasonal positions.
Okay.
The variable hourly employees, the regular positions for two full-time equivalents are still within the Fire Department budget.
The supervisors.
They're the supervisory personnel that oversee variable hourly employees.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure out, not that I'm suggesting that these go over or whatever, that's an administrative call. I was just wondering why they're split. Is it because you identify the areas and then Joe implements it? Is that how that goes?
Well, there's a lot of shared fate. You know, what Joe does in the area of trail construction and that complements, I think, what we do in the fuels reduction area. So, I think in the move to move variable hourly employees over there, they have many more variable hourly employees. That's a hard word to say a couple of times in a row. But they have, they're much more used to the payroll piece and those kind of elements that I think adds value to taking care of the employees. The supervisory point, I don't think at any point should be considered to be relocated. First off, most of our grants that fund this activity have a nexus that is embedded in fire, so the full-time equivalents for the time being are remaining in the Community Risk Reduction Division. That's also part of our primary mission, so I think collectively, Joe and I get along pretty good, and Dawn, who oversees that division, and Joe's folks, they work hand-in-hand in this stuff, so I have very few reservations about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. What I'd like to do, just kind of share up on the Elmo or whatever this contraption's called, a little bit about, you know, yesterday, Chief Black kind of shared call volume and capacity and how numbers of calls drives things. So much of the fire service, irrespective of the number of calls, spins around two things, and that's time. Time is our primary performance measure. Within the city of Prescott, we've got a couple of adopted times. One's call processing time, which means from the time the dispatcher picks up the 911 call until time of dispatch is one minute or less. Okay? They're very efficient in doing that. One minute or less from the time they pick it up till they send the most appropriate unit. And where this chain of survival, as the American Heart Association refers to, and the CPR timeline refers to, the medical component of our response model. It's very critical for us to get there in a timely fashion. Zero to four minutes, brain damage is unlikely. Brain damage starts happening about four to six minutes. Six to 10 minutes, it's likely, and then probably death after 10 minutes. I'll let my Elmo expert here kind of blow this up a little bit for us, not literally. This here is another part of our business model which deals with fire response. And again, it comes down to time and involvement. Up the left axis, you'll see kind of the percent of property destruction as compared to the time along the end bottom axis. Then the accelerating curve as you hit about five to six to seven minutes of duration. And fires multiply by about 10 times for every minute beyond 10 minutes. So, it's very critical, and this model is based on a room-and-contents fire of a 2,000-square-foot home. It would be magnified significantly in any community property or any commercial-type properties. So, again, time comes into criticality for us. I felt it critical to kind of share what the national consensus standard says in regards to time. And again, national consensus standards are not the Bible per se, but they do provide good direction as to managing career operations with fire services. And eight minutes or 480 seconds or less for the arrival of the first due company that is capable of taking positive actions towards managing an event to which an emergency response has been made. That means cumulatively from call processing, turnout times from the folks getting notified, getting in the trucks, and response, it's the recommended national standard, at about eight minutes. Prescott's performance across all risks for 2016 is the total response time for all-risk emergency response. This is everything, emergency lights and traffic, sirens, everything else, is running at about nine minutes and 48 seconds. Probably an hour or a minute and 48 seconds beyond the national norm, but I think from a look at our topography and a few other variables that we have, it's probably, and our station locations, it is probably suitable to fulfill the needs provided all five fire stations are staffed. Any questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Chief, is our stations in the right area for where we're growing?
For the immediate future, I think my predecessors did a remarkable job of outlining where fire station locations need to be. There was a point in time, I think, where they were looking at perhaps a pseudo-superstation in the downtown area that would perhaps eliminate two stations. That becomes a little problematic because every time we have a event in a courtyard area, it kind of segregates and separates two parts of our city. So, Station 1 and 2, which is Sixth Street and White Spar, I think fulfill the urban needs in the downtown area. Station 74, which is out on Smoke Tree, as supplemented by Station 51, which is our administrative headquarters with an engine staff by Central Arizona Fire and Medical, I think covers most of the bedroom communities. And then Station 73 and 75 covers their areas, 75 on Lee, and then 73 out of the airport. So, I think right at the particular time, our station locations are pretty good. I don't think there's any need for movement of those.
We're seeing growth, obviously, in the Dells and beyond Pinion Oaks, so we've got, we've got that response time still there, correct? I mean, we can make that.
Yeah, I think we're within norms for that. You know, once the density increases a little bit and the call volume, there's a number of things I look at from a fire chief's perspective. One is reliability, and what reliability means is for the defined district of an engine, that that engine is in quarters or unavailable within their district for a defined percentage of the time. I think I covered it rather extensively last year. But what that means is you want a reliability somewhere between 70 and 100%. What we saw with the brownouts was the reliability across all five stations dropped markedly, significantly across all five stations. Part of that was Station 73 browned out, 74 was going there, creating another gap, which 51 filled, creating another gap, and the cascade effect. So, I think for the immediate future, I think we're probably okay. Ask me again in a couple of years, and I might have to revisit that, but I think for probably at least 24 to 36 months, I think we're in solid ground.
Thank you.
Well, Chief, I just wanted to be clear on the distinction in response times. You were talking about brain damage occurring, starting within four to six minutes of an event, but in the response time you gave us for Prescott, nine minutes and 48 seconds, does that also apply to emergency medical response?
Yes, it does, but there's also some control measures in there as well. You know, community-based CPR, if it started. We provide pre-arrival instructions through the 911 system when somebody provides a call to 911, and we're able to coach them through how to perform CPR. So, that elongates that timeframe, which, you know, it's very problematic to try to staff for four minutes or six minutes because there's always gonna be outliers. There's always gonna be that call that takes you 10 minutes or 20 minutes. But I think we do provide a fairly solid system balance that gets us there quick enough. The other piece to that is that, you know, community involvement in CPR helps stave off some of that. And our cardiac rates are probably in the 30 to 40% success rate, but giving our, no disrespect, but our demographics, it's probably a little bit lower than the national average, but our demographics are a little bit older than the national average, so there's probably some variances there that can't be attributed to just time and that.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that if we drop our staffing levels any lower, our response times are gonna go up, and that's a risk to the community.
Yes, ma'am. That is exactly what I'm saying.
And I see a direct correlation between the sales tax that we would like to pass so that we can keep our staffing levels, at least what we have now, and expand them as we need in two, three years as we grow north.
I'm receptive of that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to get into a little bit.
We got, Mayor Pro Tim's got a question here, too.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Nice.
Chief, with regards to response and the demographic and the topographic conditions that the Fire Department has to deal with, from a service model perspective, since it's been well-defined by the Fire Department itself, that most of the calls that we funnel through the Fire Department, you know, dispatch qualifies what needs to be sent, blah, 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 less than 5% of the calls are for fire. Most of the calls are for medical emergency. Would it make any sense at all to propose a shift in service model instead of full-fledged fire trucks trying to go down the road to having medical emergency SUVs, et cetera, staffed with EMTs to go down the road to handle a portion of the calls that are funneled through dispatch?
You know, there is merit to adding alternative response approaches to this. Most commonly, industry-wide, that's used to build added capacity to the system in general. It's not used to replace pieces of the system. Very rarely would you take a, take, for example, a rescue unit, two-person quick-response vehicle, where you would not use them as a sole responder. You would still continue your in-district response with the closest, most suitable unit, and then what you would do is build capacity by using additional resources, which comes at the cost of additional response personnel to staff for the added surge in capacity of emergency medical services. Today, we run into two systems. One is a fire-based EMS system or Emergency Medical Services system. That is, the point of service is delivered within the district. And then our colleagues at Lifeline Ambulance provide the transport piece, which is integrated into the system as well. And it really takes two pieces of the system to make the whole. Fire by itself can't manage EMS, and likewise, ambulance companies by themselves can't manage emergency medical services as well. Now, there are some parcelling off of some calls that might happen, and I think we get hand-tied a little bit by technology, and hopefully some of our technological changes forthcoming will solve some of that. But the basis is, still remains, as to critical tasks. And what that means is how many sets of hands are needed at a particular event in order to mitigate or manage the event. And the example I used with the cardiac arrest, that takes about five people to manage. The other challenge with using a suburban-type response piece is oftentimes our firefighters will leapfrog from call to call to call. So, they're running a medical call, a medical call, and oh, by the way, now there's a car fire. It's less than practical for you, say, for example, you're down here on Whiskey Row serving a EMS customer and a fire in a car breaks out down on Gurley Street. It's very impractical to send a unit from somewhere distant in town, all across town to manage that event. We commonly refer to the fire trucks as our toolbox, and I hate to use kind of a cheesy analogy, but I'll risk it here. It's kind of like the plumber that comes into your house and brings the screwdriver, and then he realizes he needs a pipe wrench, so he legs himself back to his vehicle, gets the pipe wrench. Then he legs it back in, realizes he needs PVC piping and going back and forth. It's a very efficient system. It's one that's been tried and true, and I think it is a very good and solid model for our community of 41,000 people. Hopefully, I touched on most of your point there. Mr. Lamerson?
Yeah, you did. I mean, you know, we receive a lot of various comments from time to time from the public not quite fully understanding the so-called toolbox theory, when the toolbox sitting in front of Safeway someplace with the engine running. But I really thought that we need to talk about that a little bit so that the public fully is aware of why we have the toolboxes in various different places and when, and how we respond and things like that. So, I'm not suggesting that we decommission our fire trucks. What I'm asking is, there a place in the industry that we serve that it would make more sense than delivering EMT service with a different vehicle than one of the fire trucks? That's my comment.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I think what you, you know, as we sit around 8,400, 8,500 calls with a clear delineation that many of those happen in the downtown area, at some point, I think, probably after August 29th at some point, but as we move forward, I think we do need to look at adding capacity to the system because it is a system that is strained. We run pretty much 27 to 28 calls a day on average, with the brunt of those being Station 1, 2, and 4, which is the downtown, and then off Smoke Tree. So, I think at some point, we need to look at that. The immediate solution is really to maintain the status quo a little bit, though, I think, because to do something that is counterintuitive to getting the toolbox there could become very problematic for this community, and you could have increased risk.
Thank you for your response.
Because of woman Orr?
Yes. So, Chief, could you tell me how you think the CAD system is going to help?
Well, a couple of reasons. First, and probably most prevalent, I think, is we'll be able to provide a lot more pre-arrival direction to citizens when they call 911 to ensure the correct priority response is extrapolated from the caller with very few facts to make sure the response piece is appropriate. for the need. What we don't want to do is, you know, you don't want to send an ambulance and a firetruck racing across town, because racing across town is the most dangerous part of our business. You know, more firefighters next to some health emergencies, racing, not racing in the sense of racing, but responding in emergency traffic is the most dangerous part of our job. So I think we'll be able to curtail some of that piece through the new CAD system by able to delineate the calls a little bit better. The other piece is, there are some low-priority calls that we go on today that if we had a better way to extrapolate from the caller the detailed information, and we realize, not to minimize anybody's call to 911. Anybody that's called doesn't call it because they wanted to. They call it because it's their emergency. And I think what you could do is through some interrogatories with the callers, be able to perhaps offshore some of that call responsibility to our lifeline partners. That said, you know, there was quite the headline in there yesterday about the ability for the ambulance company to provide services. That's not necessarily the case all the time here in Prescott, because we are at the, kind of, the center of the community. It's more problematic, I think, out in the districts. But there are times, as recent in the last week, that we entered code red, as they refer to it, and there's no ambulances available. So you have to have a response model that can address all of those. So I think the new CAD will smooth things out a little bit, especially on the call processing piece.
And do you know when that will be up and running? I see Kevin's in the audience, but do you know when that's?
January of 2018.
Okay, great. Great. And finally, can you speak to the relationship with CAFMA and that partnership?
Yeah, I'd be honored to. You know, it's a longstanding partnership. You know, Chief Freitag and I actually have conversations, much like you probably do with your colleagues at the DIAS, on a fairly regular basis. We're both very community-involved, so I think that helps. But we're still maintain our individual identities, which I think is critical for the profession. But, you know, from a response piece, there's very few in this country that have such a seamless automatic aid system that, you know, through automatic vehicle location devices and that, that the most appropriate and closest unit responds, irregardless of what the unit says on the side of the vehicle. It's not uncommon. Mountain Club, for example, is a CAFMA-served area, but we serve it through Engine 71 up by where my administrative offices are. Much of that is city property, where the first due engine companies to perhaps some of your homes is a CAFMA engine company. So it's seamless from the public perception, and that's how we like it. It's not without some tenacious moments sometimes. I mean, we're all individuals, and we all kind of look out for our own, but I think it's a very collaborative and really a model organization as to how we work hand-in-hand with one another.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, if I could real quick to add to that. Chief, and I want to expand that not only with the fire, which is a great relationship, and that took years to build, and I think it's a great thing, and it goes across the board with Joe and the county and the police, with the sheriff and with the tribe, and we've got a good relationship with people outside of our community, and it's something that needs to keep going and maintain through the years to come because it took a long time to get there.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And, you know, even when there is those moments of conflict, you know, there's nothing that is detrimental to any of the organizations that can't usually be worked through. And we continue to work hand-in-hand. A good example is in January of 16 when we started the brownouts. You know, that was a tenacious time in the partnership. Hopefully, it was mostly invisible tenacious times for everybody up here because we made it work. You know, likewise, when they have challenges of their own, when they've been understaffed or they have a number of light-duty folks, that they've run into issues, and we've been able to kind of fill in there. So it is a very mutual and respective relationship amongst all partners countywide. Let me kind of jump through. I got about three slides here, actually four slides, I think. Just kind of wanted to hit the high points as to our three branches. Fire administrative branches, basically, is the office of the fire chief. Some of our, there's kind of a laundry list there, and I'll just pick out one or two of these that are kind of critical. First and foremost, probably why we're here today, is the budget development. We have a number of different cost centers across our three branches. Jamie Sventek is remarkable at the job she does at Herding Cats, because each one of these cost centers has a separate program manager that provides input. I solicit input, usually in October through crew meetings. If there's some employee-based need that's out there, I like to hear about it so I can get it ahead of time. And I think when you get to our Capitol, you'll see one of those today. The other, Arizona Wildfire and Incident Management Academy, the week-long academy in March out at Emory Riddle. Tony Shaka, who works in our basement up on 1700 Iron Springs, he's the champion of that. 15 years in existence, brings a lot of folks to this community, a lot of fire service professionals, and it trains over 700 folks in any given year. Strategic planning is also a core responsibility out of my office. It's been very difficult, you know, in the three-year tenure that I've had here, to really start getting traction in a lot of directions, because as everybody up here knows, every time you have a positive conversation, that five-letter acronym comes up, and, you know, it kind of stifles everything. But I think what you've done as a councilman, mayor, to direct some general plan and some good, solid strategic planning allows us to dovetail in furthering your goals. Prescott Firefighters Charities, very critical for us to maintain community connection. I serve as a liaison for them. We don't supplant them or offer any sort of funding mechanisms. They're a 501(c)(3), but I do see a value in us being able to shine with our brand, and that's much what Prescott Firefighters Charities does. And the final one there that I'd like to touch on is the Department Auxiliary. As you know, about August of last year, I think I kind of made the announcement to the folks up here, and we did some open houses, and we're able to successfully bring on about six auxiliary members. I wanted to take this by design in baby steps. I thought it was very critical to kind of, you know, do what we can do and do it really good versus trying to take on more. We're continually expanding their mission and their role and responsibility. I got folks that will do everything from freeing up a battalion chief's time for mail circulation through our five deployment locations to picking up the heavy boxes that station at our admin offices and getting those out, using them in a prevention role to get out and do site inspections and facilities inspections. We started with six. We've had one that voluntarily resigned about a month into it. We've had a second that has moved out of Prescott, and we are currently undergoing some recruitment strategies to get a few more numbers with us. I think right at the moment, we're ready to take it to about 10. And these folks are, you know, for their gratitude and their delivery of service, they get rewarded by a gray t-shirt. Probably not bad return on our investment, when you really think about it. These guys are really key.
Mayor, can I mention, Chief, if you don't mind, I noticed you have Powell on your list here, and I just really want to commend what they do. And I've been to several of their meetings. They have monthly meetings. It's amazing to go in there and see all the communities and all the firefighters and all the emergency personnel that are assembled in one location every month. And the firewise communities really do help with the safety of the Prescott area.
I couldn't agree more. Powell, I'm sorry.
And Bob Betts and all he's done, it's just really tremendous.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. You know, and it's a top-down, bottom-up involvement. You know, I try to do my due diligence to attend each and every one of the Powell meetings. I think in my three years that I've been here, I've probably missed three, because I think it's critical to have a department-level person there. It is the green trucks, the red trucks, the yellow trucks, and the white trucks, so we have all the responders that are there. And it's interaction with citizens to include, you know, we do weekend stuff and get out in the community and, you know, try to sell prevention, because, and anecdotally, $1 of response cost equals about $25 of preventative outreach. So maybe I got that inverted. Sorry.
Know what you mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. With as many retired fire personnel that live in the city of Prescott, do we see opportunity in the future, here, Chief, as you expand your auxiliary capability, to reach out to the community with regards to fire inspection? While I ultimately understand fire safety in this community falls on the shoulders of the fire department, not on volunteers, et cetera, you can use those folks to somewhat help take some of the burdensome day-in-and-day-out of fire inspection-type issues off the shoulders of qualified firefighters to be out fighting fires or doing whatever they do.
Yeah, well, we are also in a level of transition this particular year. A number of our, well, in fact, all our fire inspection personnel are moving to development services or community development. That said, I think the relationships that are already on board with Chief Devendorf and Building Official Plumber, I think, you know, if it wasn't for those two individuals, this would be a bigger transition than it is. I can tell you, organizationally, it's a culture shock. It's very, less than contemporary, the move. But on the same token, I'm optimistic that we'll make this work. And, you know, I'd like to think that there's some good thought behind it. You know, yesterday, you listened to the presentation, and, you know, Michael and I have had some conversations, very direct and forward on this, and, you know, it wasn't until yesterday I actually caught a little bit more of the big picture on that move. And moving, you know, the code enforcement folks and the building safety folks and the inspectors and all that under one umbrella is probably not a bad idea. But I don't think in Debbie's case or in my case that we would have felt as comfortable as we may do. And ask me again in six months, it might change, but for the time being, I'm very optimistic that I think it'll work. And, you know, I think that's where that plays. To the sense of retired folks in our community, you know, we have to have capacity to manage volunteers, too. And I'm very lean at the very top end to have that capacity, because it takes people, volunteers, if you don't keep them engaged, will soon depart as very unhappy folks. So it's very critical for us to keep that very small at the time being. Grow it as you would a plant or anything else. Slowly feed it some water, cultivate it, build the relationships, and then see where you can perhaps bear more fruit.
I appreciate those comments, Chief. Part of the idea, the concept, either you're getting people that are already enrolled in PSPRS or people that don't necessarily have to be in PSPRS, and add further liability for longer periods of time to an already stressed pension fund. So hence, my comments are coming with genuine concern with regards to your qualified staff that are qualified firefighters and their time, because it's very time-absorbing to go out and take a look at every nut and bolt, so to speak, when, in fact, you really don't need qualified firefighters or police officers to go do that. What you need is, you need people that know how to do it, that can step up to the plate.
Yes, sir. And most of that work has been taken off from the backs of our line personnel, our sworn, our qualified firefighters. Most of those folks are focused in this particular area that I'm ready to segue into, and that's called the Fire Emergency Services. Very few, they have some ancillary duties. You know, you always have the public outreach and those kind of things that, nothing attracts kids and makes them a bigger fan than sending out a firetruck with some young firefighters and where they can interact. But, you know, there's a bigger role when we free up their time off inspections that they can fulfill in public outreach, and that's where we're moving this model to.
Thank you for your comments, Chief.
Yeah, I'm going to rabbit through this next slide a little bit as best as possible, but Fire Emergency Services, as I shared at the very beginning, is the point of service. This is where all the staff, these are all public safety retirement persons. There are sworn staff. We have a number of different disciplines. Even though through tradition, we still maintain our name as the Prescott Fire Department, and I think, once we get into some solid strategic planning efforts at the department level, that moniker very well could change to better represent what we actually are. We're more than a fire department. We're an all-risk response agency, and to kind of capture that, it's, you know, there's sometimes you can call a plumber, there's sometimes you can call a satellite repairman, there's sometimes you can call or go to the hardware store, but there's very few times that you can call somebody to solve a majority of the health and safety and serious concerns in a community other than the police or the fire department. And that's kind of what our driving force is in emergency services. We offer paramedic-level service, which means our paramedic personnel can administer medications, do advanced therapies, innovate, use different tools and techniques in a pre-hospital setting. It's the highest, well, it's the second to the highest field-level certification, being in pre-hospital, the highest being a registered nurse or that kitted capability, which I'd love to move forward to, and something we may explore down the road. But paramedic-level service is our core service level, as are all these in one fashion or another. It is, does run the run of our calls. The other piece about tactical EMS is, we are actually embedded with the SWAT team. We have an individual that's embedded and responds with SWAT. All our members are trained in active shooter and those kind of response narratives. God forbid one ever happens up in our community, but I think across the region, I think we're fairly well-prepared, and we continually interact and train amongst the different disciplines. Some of our public safety, or public service responses, you know, I hate to say, use a Ghostbuster analogy, but a lot of these land on our lap, because at 2:00 in the morning, you have a standing force here ready to serve this community. So when that snake arrives on that patio, or non-domesticated animal shows up, one that animal control very rarely will deal with, game and fish has gone home for the night, that usually ends up in our sphere of influence. And, you know, I, for one, I'm not a big fan of snakes. I do recognize good snakes from bad snakes, but there's that other kind of snake that I'd prefer to see out there, but they're not always there when they're moving still. All that said, we kind of cover all the public service responses, smoke alarm assistance, lift assists. Motor vehicle accident response with extrication and stabilization, that's a general EMS response, but there's a lot of times we'll end up having to force into the vehicle or those kind of needed tools. Technician-level hazardous material response, we cohouse our hazardous materials response for the basin area. Currently, it's at CAFMA. Soon, it will leave back up here, and we do that on a six-month basis, that we go back and forth.
Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, on this public service responses, we had discussed this last year, and the one that really, and I understand about in-the-middle-of-the-night breaks and water breaks, and, you know, we had the electrical hazard just recently with an APS problem and all of that down on Pleasant Street. And then there's the education with smoke alarm assistance. But the one that I'd like to know if there's been an improvement on is this lift assist. And I'm not talking about somebody I fall and I can't get up type assist, but professional in institutions.
In care facilities?
Correct.
Yeah, that's an ongoing cycle. Most of the folks that work in those facilities, and they get driven by a couple different things sometimes. One is insufficient staffing at those locations, and Division Chief Mosier's in the audience, but I think he would say that, you know, that's kind of one of those things, you tell them today, you have to go back next week. kind of one of those things, you tell them today, you have to go back next week and tell them, and tell them again, and then you get them converted for three or four months and the turnover of personnel and you start all over again. It's, you know, we have some concerns coming right now up on the hill, that big wood-frame building that's up there right now, that hopefully we can work with the, especially given the size of that monstrosity, that we can work with the caretakers to help ease some of that burden that they aren't calling us. You know, the ones in the family residence, those aren't too problematic, but that continues to be a problem. And we work on educating the faculty that's there, but it's an ongoing challenge. And I wish I could say, wow, that's only a Prescott thing. That is a national challenge.
Isn't there, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but isn't there someone that we as a city or as a department contact their oversight group or authority? Isn't there standards that they have to hold up to?
Yeah, there are. Through Arizona Department of Health Services would be probably the key point. And I haven't really built the relationship with the current director as well as I did with the previous one. I know it's on their radar, but it's not flashing red by any means on their radar. It's not one, because what you're voicing here has been said at every municipality.
I mean, we're basically supplementing their overhead because they're not staffed properly.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lozelle, just to dovetail on that, I'm sorry, Mayor, let me just.
Go ahead.
In terms of Touchmark, I've contacted the Touchmark Executive Director, acknowledging that we're going to be at the bottom of the hill and talking about the possibilities of partnering in terms of staffing, them assisting with staffing, or the purchase of a vehicle that isn't a big red fire engine to run up and down. So I think over the course of FY '18, those dialogues, and the chief and I will have them, need to be with the other facilities in town too.
Yeah.
Because you're dead on about this.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Matt, this is a question for you. I know this has come up before with respect to charging a fee for emergency services, but a lift assist is not necessarily emergency when you lift someone who falls out of bed back into bed because they're too heavy for staff to handle. And our strong firefighters can do it. Can we charge for that type of service?
And I'll defer to the chief on this. My understanding is that generally, for pure fire emergency services or police emergency services, Arizona doesn't allow to charge a fee. I don't know about lift assist off the top of my head. It's something I'll research and get back to you on. But I can see a distinction there. Now, whether or not, you know, the state sees a distinction or the insurance companies see a distinction is something else. I just don't know the answer off the top of my head.
I think it's worth looking into because sometimes the best way people learn is when they feel it in their pocketbook.
Right.
Yeah, and just to chime in a little bit, there are occasions that we will be dispatched to a lift assist, and we get there and there is actually a potential injury. You know, most of the folks are in the senior demographics. And with that, you know, a simple fall can be very problematic to them. So, you know, I would not want to get out of the business, but on the same token, I think there is an educational piece and perhaps a financial incentive to gain compliance that might be able to be pursued.
I happen to look.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your input, Michael, with regards to that. I'd like to think that Touchmark's going to be a very good partner with the city and appreciate the opportunity to provide the jobs that Touchmark is bringing to the city and the millions of dollars that they're bringing to this city. I would like to think of them as something other than a monstrosity. While I realize that they may put a different service level, I agree with Councilman Lozelle that are there services that come along with what somebody chose to build here, that they need to look forward to covering the cost of impact on the other residents of the community as well as the service capability of the city. Same thing with smoke alarm detectors and things like that where we have to go out and inspect smoke alarms or such. I don't see where that's the fire department's responsibility to do that at no cost. So there are, I think, some opportunities to meet with folks like Touchmark or like Las Fuertes or like Alta Vista or like, or like, or like. Because as the chief alluded to, the demographic of Prescott has changed a lot. And people have a right to move where they choose to want to move, but that doesn't necessarily mean everybody else has to pay the cost. So any opportunity we have to research that would be greatly appreciated.
I'll say one thing on the smoke alarms. You know, I know, I've talked to people that say that when they start having an alarm going off and they know it's probably a battery, they call the fire department, ask them to come out and change the batteries. I can understand if a fire alarm's going off and somebody doesn't know if there's some possible smoke in an attic or something that they can't smell, but it could be causing the alarm. And having the fire department come along and use their IR detectors and see if there's any hot spots, I can understand that. But it's definitely determined to be purely the need to change out batteries. I'm not sure that's something that we should be doing. You know, they can call other services in town that can service the smoke alarms.
I'm respective of that, not holistically agreeing in the sense that one of the challenges is if folks continue to allow the alarms to beep, eventually they go dead and then you have no working smoke alarm. So I think being proactive is a wise way to be. These are not emergency services calls, these are at our convenience type calls. And it's not to compete with private enterprise. I mean, I work very well with Sandy, and there's many of those, specifically ones that you're alluding to, Mayor, that I think we turn over to the contractors now to kind of remedy.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue on emergency services here. Technician-level rescue response, there's really four disciplines under that particular heading, water, swift water, trans-shore and breaching, confined space and high-low angle along with wilderness rescue. I think this time of year is very prevalent. As recent as, I think it was Tuesday of this, Monday of this week, injured hiker, we had to wheel her out on a litter, broken ankle. And with that, you know, that takes organizational and staff to be able to perform those elements. It's not, you know, you can't pick the person up and just leg them out. There's a methodology as to how those are approached. And these are not what I would say in the category of the dumb driver type stuff. These are just folks that had a slip, trip, or fall that we go out and leg out. There are provisions in the vehicle code specifically, I believe. Well, law enforcement might chime in on that, but for when folks cross washes and stuff, that they're just acting dumb. And those ones, I think there is a cost recovery mechanism that we could explore as well. But those are very few and far between. The other piece on the technician level is with all the construction going on, as recent as, I think it's the Fan Building down here on Monizuma where we had a worker fall, those become technical rescues and they're very complex and those kind of things. So they, for technician-level training, it's about 200 hours of specialized training that goes with that. We were fortunate to just graduate three more folks. So it's a game of attrition. You have one or two folks attrition out of your organization or vacate the skill, and then you have to fill the voids with some succession planning. Fire suppression, kind of down to the four main ones here, structural, wildland, vehicle and refuse. Pretty straightforward, I mean, everybody understands that, I think. Very labor-intensive. For example, the wildfire down on Monument Park the other day, probably a little bit over-resourced, but it also gave us an opportunity to kind of interact with our agency partners, the US Forest Service specifically, by getting a Type 2 hand crew out there and be able to build on something small that should a bigger event occur, that we're already face-to-face with everybody and know everybody out there. Aircraft rescue firefighting, again, very specialized. It's actually very much my background came out of this particular field after my military career. But each individual has about 80 hours of air-field operations training and required live-fire training in addition and above and beyond their regular training. The other cost center that's here is the professional services, which used to be a standalone division. Ultimately, this will come under the purview of an assistant chief to kind of manage and facilitate. A lot of the day-to-day training is executed by what's called field training officers. Those are qualified instructors that provide direct delivery training to our folks, much like our law enforcement colleagues. There's certain skill sets that we have to repeat, repeat, and repeat over and over and over again. And then there's some others there. The firefighter wellness standards, each year, as part of conditions for many of our grants, including SAFER and mostly assistance for firefighter grants, we have to have a wellness component. So that also falls under the professional services. And then finally, non-wildland grant application, SHICGAP, which is the State Homeland Security Grant Program, and those, most of those are managed out of the professional services element or cost center. Our final branch is Community Risk Reduction Services. Right at the moment, many of the doers are being migrated over to Development Services, as I shared earlier. But the overall responsibility for the application of the International Fire Code and International Wildland Urban Interface Code rests with the fire department. So Don Devendorf will continue in that role for the foreseeable future. And again, if it wasn't the relationship between Don and Randy, I think I'd be more anxious than I am moving forward. Some of the other elements, new and existing construction reviews, CPR training, fire investigation services is one that's very critical. We can do some first-level or low-level investigations, but a technical investigation takes another skill set. The other piece to this, and, you know, we have Internal Affairs that's identified to this division. Much like our law enforcement, I try to make sure that the person investigating isn't in the line of authority of the person or persons that might be subjected to an Internal Affairs complaint. So with that, I have made it my sole purpose, anytime I have a citizen or an employee or other complaint, I close the loop. I document, 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 and then see what kind of conclusion we arrive at. And then I provide feedback, usually to the complainant, sometimes with redacted information, sometimes with just the black and white of what it was.
Chief, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No problem.
But, you know, you've referenced the relationship between Devendorf and Plummer a couple of different times. And here again, they look like you and me. You know, they got gray hair and lots of wrinkles and everything. What sort of plan of succession do we have in place when these guys either move on or move out? You know?
Yeah, I can tell you on the fire marshal piece, you know, some folks can almost make themselves irreplaceable, but the reality is, I think, we provide the skill sets through our promotional opportunities to battalion chief, that there will be very little of a gap. There's always going to be a learning curve. You know, it's kind of like, you know, when I went from an assistant chief to a fire chief or a battalion chief to an assistant chief, there's always a learning curve and there's usually a little bit of a honeymoon period. That said and done, I think we've provided those that are heir apparent or capable of becoming heir apparents to move up into those positions, the faculties to be able to do that successfully.
Thank you. I think the public needs to hear, because, I mean, none of us, while we're all getting older, we're not blind. And we all know who we are here. And I think it's really pretty, pretty, pretty nice to hear that we've got people working up through the ladder, that when somebody does retire or somebody does move out or whatever the case is, that we've got somebody to step into that place.
Well, I deck on that, if it was one of the unintended or perhaps even intended consequences of creating an assistant chief position is just for that. I have to create an heir apparent within the organization, somebody that can move into that shoe. You know, I hope to have some career longevity, Mr. Lamar. All that said and done, I think preparing the person below you to assume your role upon your departure is very critical. And it's very close to my heart because I think the folks that served me and I served did a pretty good job of it. So I'm very thankful for that. The other piece, and I'll emphasize, the wildland nexus on the grant application. Again, one of our, many of the impetuses for wildland fire fuels reduction grants have a fire department nexus. So it's very critical, I think, as we move forward, to continue to manage through fuels reduction and the oversight through the fire department.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Chief, I just want to back up real quick. So I understand the Internal Affairs that was explained, the Fire Investigative Services, there's difference between investigative and inspections?
Much so, yeah. The investigations try to get at the origin and cause. Inspections are purely proactive. You try to identify challenges to fire service delivery ahead of time. The investigation piece, they can be very technical. You know, take for example, you know, flashback to my arrival when we had a spat of commercial kitchen fires. You know, it doesn't take a brain surgeon, when you look at your pager and see it three times in about 40 days, to say, hey, there's a trend here. So what you do is try to then create a proactive means to counter the trend. In that particular example, we investigated the fire, determined some were caused by inadequate or insufficient equipment. We've since, perhaps to the demise of some of the commercial kitchen owners, but we've kind of tightened it down a bit. And, you know, gosh forbid, hopefully that's wood. You know, we haven't had a real fire in the last three years in a commercial kitchen fire. So there are outcome-based stuff that I think is very successful.
And that investigative is, because I know that, just from my prior experience elsewhere, that, I mean, the state does it and like, centrally avowed, do they investigate their own or do they use the state?
No, they, most municipalities have a requirement to investigate their own. You know, even though there is a state umbrella, that usually only deals with healthcare facilities and schools. It will not stick to mom and pop or single-family residents or commercial applications. I think they have like three for the entire state that are qualified investigators, so they don't have any capacity. So it remains our responsibility to investigate cause and origin, or origin and cause, cause and origin, I believe. Okay. Okay, I'm going to transition just a little bit about our capital stuff before, because it's at the top of the list. And then Lieutenant Perlak's here to speak about the police capital information and then the regional communication stuff. I mentioned it very early in the presentation, you know, we talked about bottom-up input on the budgetary process. For those that aren't aware, we had a catastrophic failure on a motor vehicle accident with injuries just after the beginning of the fiscal year, to the point where we got on scene and our extrication equipment assigned to that particular engine failed to operate as designed. The equipment's about 12 to 14 years old. We moved some stuff around in our current fiscal year budget to be able to purchase a replacement unit, but that first item is to replace the balance of the units again so we have a full toolbox, not just a piecemeal toolbox. The records management system, that goes hand-in-hand with the CAD. We have, need to document our information. And with that, that would become the holding source for our documentation. Thermal imaging cameras, we got a couple through grants. This would round out so all the rest of the apparatus are fully equipped with thermal imaging cameras. And the final item is, it's called a blinker sign warning system. Over two years ago, we identified a risk management need outside of Smoke Tree Fire Station. When the station was designed and built, there wasn't an issue with significant volume of traffic. Since that time, we've had fire trucks in the roadway being driven around when we have backers, spotters out in the roadway, racing around, they come down there. We've done some speed enforcement efforts, but that's only good when you have the officer there. And we think this is a proactive means to perhaps limit some risk of a firefighter or a civilian getting killed as they negotiate around that. With that, that concludes my presentation on the fire department segment of the budget, if there's any further questions that you might have.
Questions, Councilor.
Thanks, chief.
I've got a couple things. I know there was NFPA study, National Fire Protection Association study that came out, I think toward the end of last year. It was a nationwide study on fire departments across the United States. And there seemed to be a general trend of a reduction of all career staff fire And there seemed to be a general trend of a reduction of all career staff fire departments to a combination of career and volunteer. And likewise, there was a reduction of all volunteer, moving toward a combination of both career and volunteer. So I commend the chief and the city manager on looking at what you can do to try and start increasing our volunteer capability and moving to more of the model that appears to be happening across the United States. Secondly, the U.S. Forest Service Fire Center, I know, responded the other day to the fire down on Montezuma, and I know their additional capacity that we have in northern, northern part of Prescott to help with firefighting capabilities. Also, I'm a member of the Western Region Advisory Council, the Western RAC, which handles homeland security funding, grant funding for emergency management. And I will commend the city manager and the Police Department and the Fire Department in the fact that they continually get praised at these meetings where we're trying to divide the funding, because they come in with very good applications for, for what they need. And so I think we need to keep doing that. I think that is an opportunity source for us. Looking at the capital outlays here, you know, some of these things, like the $100,000 tool package, $300,000 for field rail replacement, those are very difficult to get out of, you know, the Western RAC because of just the dollar map.
Right, well, specific to the extrication equipment, our Assistance for Firefighter Grant application this year was focused to that. All the awards haven't been made, so, you know, I guess we could keep our fingers and toes crossed that when this is, most of the reviews have been done out at FEMA already, but the awards all haven't been made yet. So there is still an opportunity that that could be grant-funded through the Assistance for Firefighters Grant.
Right. And again, that grant you just talked about, I know is probably a very likely one that we could look at for the breathing air compressor and trailer that we talked about earlier. I know I've seen on that, people that put in for those grants actually ask for a $7, $8, or a $1,000 fire truck. So there's some, some opportunity there, and I think we ought to look at that and first, maybe before we try and actually go against the general fund. I noticed that, you know, you have changed your organization chart over the last year. And, you know, if we can flatten the organization, I think that's a good idea, particularly if we can also gain greater efficiency. But we also, in my mind, have a fairly top-heavy organization when you take a look at it with three Battalion Chiefs and 15 Captains. And in my mind, I'm not certain that Assistant Fire Chief is necessary. I don't think that's something that we ought to be looking at. I know in many base, many jobs I've been in, both military and civilian life, we groom people that would move up and take over the key positions without having to actually establish a position that they would go into and, and train from that position. People were normally selecting an organization that could be trained and tailored to move up. So that's one area that I think that we need to continue to look at and debate, because I'm not sure that's totally necessary. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just one, Mayor. I'm sorry, Jim, you want to go? Please.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at your silver hair, and I want to make sure that you get it in there quickly. Up here, I'm only 19, I'm sorry. Chief, what exactly does the Assistant Chief do?
Basically, they provide the direct operational oversight for the emergency services delivery of this community. The Assistant Chief specifically will provide the oversight. Each day, 365 days a year, a different Battalion Chief is in command of the units that provide the service. This person would be on an administrative assignment, Monday through Friday, with a secondary emergency response role for escalating events, to respond and assist the incident commander in establishing that the needs to fulfill management of the emergency at hand. There's some areas in professional services, human relations, or not human relations, but human resource, promotional testing, that this person would have the responsibility for. And again, it's, it's a reallocation of an existing Division Chief and piling more duties on to that role as to the impetus for that position being sought.
So is this an addition to what we already have, or is this a repositioning?
It is a reclassification.
Okay.
Repositioning of a current employee, or if the opportunity presents itself, new employee, if there's not a qualifying candidate inside, depending upon a vacancy being available.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief, I can't find my notes, but I think you said $6,000?
Yeah, I'm ballparking that. I believe it was 6,500 to 7,500, Mark, or anybody know? Is it higher than that? We can look it up and get back with you.
But that's for all the additional duties that the person's doing, so.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Reverend Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I appreciate the opportunity of looking at grants, but I've long argued, depending on grants for public safety, to me is a, not a very good idea sometimes. And if there's equivalent that we need to do our job, I would hate to think we have to depend on somebody else to supply the money for our public safety. So I would like, from a priority perspective, to understand fully, you know, what happens if we don't get the grants? Does that mean we don't get this, this, and this?
These are budgeted items within the current general fund budgeted items. If we get the grants, that would relieve the general fund of that planned expense.
Thank you. So, so in other words, if we get the grants, there's more money in the general fund to do what?
As councilman, everybody decides.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
In response to your comment, Mayor, I am absolutely opposed to turning our fire department into a volunteer agency. We just would not get the response time that we have now. And volunteers come and go, they require high level of training, a lot of them don't stick with it. I've worked with volunteer fire districts, a large part of my legal career with Pocahontas County, and they work pretty well in rural areas with small communities that wouldn't otherwise have any fire protection. But in a city like Prescott, with over 40,000 people, and interconnectedness and that partnership with Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, we absolutely have to have a professionally-staffed fire department.
Well, again, I think the volunteers that we have in the Police Department do an excellent job. And also, I know the city manager, maybe you go ahead and explain your situation back in Georgia, but you had some career folks, but many volunteers, and covered a 500-square-mile area, and apparently it was quite adequate.
It was for the level of service that the community's expected and wanted. That's the key to the whole question, is what do the residents and the elected officials have in terms of an expectation?
So what was the mix that you had back there?
It was about 150 volunteers and nine full-time folks.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Just to get back to Councilwoman Orr's question, the full cost of that, which includes the pension, which of course is 92%, so it's not just a salary increase, it's just an estimate with all those other costs, including work, about $9,600 a year.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
And this is the second question we've had about a reclass, and maybe what we do is try to work through everything, and then at the end of the day-to-day, you guys make a definitive call, if you can, about those two. There was the one in the Community Development Department as well.
Thank you very much, Members, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, it took about an hour and a half. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll get started again.
Has to have a certain skill level, or a fire. Has to have a certain skill. I'm not going to talk much on your. There are many. 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 Or, you know. We just go, were there any questions on the PD? Or, we don't keep them up.
Oh, I know. And I just, I wouldn't.
I don't think there are any questions. They're out there assisting, you know, cross one.
Yeah, they're present.
Um, should be there.
Their eyes on you. They're not.
But they're not one of these guys.
Right.
And they don't really know it, so.
Because I don't want my notes over.
Wait. A volunteer across. No, what do you think? Part of my existence is just, I just don't want to have my insurance. Well, the reality is, you know, he's going to get all the work. He's already, he's already given it off staff. That's why they're, they're, they don't have the state certification. It's still, it's also power.
What happens?
They take it off the, you know, the, the. That's the practical answer.
What do you turn on, search the choice?
I've got one picture.
You don't want it?
Until the last, very last.
Okay. Why don't you want your?
It's just not one of them.
Okay. All right. I suppose I'd be happy to do it. I don't care if it's.
Yeah, that was a stupid question. And I did try to talk to Touchmark. I mean, I do think that there's got to be some way they can help us.
Oh, you live in the woods.
Furniture man, explorer, so I don't want to remind you of fire truck up the hill every day. And that would be a big deal.
Yeah. Something to incorporate there. Yeah. I'm not talking about the daughter taking care of her father at home.
Yeah.
No, these are still living in the service. They're real money and, uh, they really talk about.
Kind of like drug rehab.
Yeah.
That'll be the next one you guys could ask.
So, yeah, that's just, it's just.
Have to leave their job.
I know that they're not.
Get stationed.
They could get a phone. This was, if this was Ashford, I would say probably the expectation is a lot lower as far as just the irritation of my.
I know, it's a valid one, because they take advantage of this one. I guarantee you, and they, and they were sold on that site. You do know damn well they're like, there's a fire station right there on the other side. And when I first see guys like, yeah, you know, Mr. Lee donated the land for that already. I said, that doesn't really help me in any way at this point. I don't care if we put sponsor by Touchmark on the side of the damn thing.
That's true.
Well, yeah, they're probably, they're probably going to shoot you. Probably will help them out.
Well, I went to a district.
They maybe you got it. They sponsored. Well, the vista must look to is because it just.
Especially after I wrote in their Mercedes leather seated van that they're taking people in, it probably dropped six figures plus on that damn thing.
It's exactly.
Four to thirty grand.
I wish you would have talked more to this, I guess.
Might take more public pressure than maybe that.
I noticed. Right.
Here's the thing. I don't disagree that, that we could be more of a combination system. The problem is, combination systems go the other way. They have all these volunteers and they get a few full-time guys. You don't go back. It just doesn't, it's not practical.
I talked to a retired firefighter, like, I don't, so that is, you know, I've, I've, I've learned in the retail business, you possibly get what you pay for.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
You, you, you don't get what you don't pay for. Trying to, okay, because if in fact the outcome.
No, because a walk. Yeah.
You're doing outcome-based budget. If in fact the outcome of what you decided is this, then if it's, you know, that's what you staff for, that's what she budgeted for. If you want an Ashford outcome.
And especially in a community like this where the demographics is, you know, like many ages sixty. I mean, maybe in a.
How many of our retirees?
We got three, four-year-olds and shit.
Unity is, I love it. Those, like, three, four thousand.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're the same level.
You pay right now.
Oh, there she is. Oh, great.
There's a bureaucrat, you ever saw him, right? Joe, Joe.
Overspender.
Yeah, the overspender.
Oh, wow.
I know, I like to give you crap.
That's why it's, since it's a joke. Tell Michael what's going on.
Sixteen hundred dollars.
They're going to open this thing.
How long will it take, or is it happening?
It needs to get different. In fact, I'm going to go out there. And everything else, I got to do more reading and Public Works soon.
You getting close to that?
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Report, it's.
Report concrete at ten. Report yesterday, report at ten. That was the biggest piece.
Good.
Do we have any heavy equipment for inter?
A little louder into the mic, you know.
I enjoy it. Hunter asked for the employee, but.
That was going to help.
You guys are pickable.
Yeah. Just one more thing to do.
I don't eat.
And who's to say that the person that's in the deputy position, we want to move up to. We hand down half.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. But that might be a good.
Absolutely. Great idea. Thank you.
For Cindy.
Hey, Kevin.
Good for her.
So, where'd she go to? Nice trip?
Not here.
Not here.
So, can we overhear? About that baseball. Your son was.
Okay, let's go ahead and sit down and get started again, please.
So, no?
All right, to continue the budget workshop, the, just wanted to bring up an, an offer if there's any questions on the rest of the public safety capital. There's mobile data, computer replacement in police department, as well as the CAD replacement in regional communications. Is there any questions on that? If not, we'll just continue into parks and recreation, or recreation services. The, the biggest change here in parks, lakes, trails, and landscape, we've already mentioned that many times, that's the fuels reduction seasonal, as well as a increased maintenance at the parks. The facilities management, that relates to the road, the, um, the parking garage maintenance being reclassified as capital next year. Fleet services is up quite a bit. The big reason there is Mark brought up at the very beginning of the workshop yesterday, that's the debt refunding for the facility. So, there's a $2.8 million budget for that refunding. The next thing to kind of look at is the actual funding sources for all of these four divisions and the impact on the general fund tax base is decreasing. Part of that is the result of increased collection of parking fees and tournaments that are planned for next year and special events. That's offsetting the cost of the general fund, uh, recreation services. And I think with that, we'll jump over to the personnel. You'll notice here there's two new divisions, uh, as discussed earlier, the facilities management and fleet services. The personnel changes here only relate to those two, um, visions moving out of the field and facilities department into this one.
We got one question from the mayor, Pro Tim.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure if this question's appropriate for Michael, or for Matt, or for Joe. And the question is, is that we're, we're moving some personnel from one division over to a next division. And the one division, the minute that you're hired by the fire department, you automatically by law have to be in PSBRS. You're a qualified firefighter, we can't put you anywhere else. So, when it comes into fuels reduction into parks and recreation services, do those personnel also have to be in PSBRS?
They don't and will not be and aren't.
Thank you.
And can I add to that, city manager, so they also have, they will never fight fire?
No, and in some ways, part of the reasoning for this is to clearly delineate, they're not even fire department employees, they're recreation department employees.
Thank you for answering the question.
At this point, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Joe Baines to, to bring up and present his capital plan.
Thank you. Good morning, mayor and council. Uh, before I get into that, um, I just wanted to, uh, point out a couple of things. Council strategic goals are woven into our budget. Um, they, they live in there. Um, for example, quality of life or livability has an economic development component too, which also, uh, supports, uh, stabilizing the general fund. So, really, a lot of thought is put into when the budget is created to, um, implement the council's strategic goals. Uh, one of the other things that I'm excited about is, uh, while you won't see it on the organizational chart, uh, our department's involvement in, uh, tourism. Um, I think it's been a long time coming, and I think there's a lot of good energy based in that, and I love the collaborative approach with, with John Heine and, and, and all those folks, and working with economic development too, uh, Jim Robb, because a lot of what is going to attract those businesses here is going to be that livability, and, and that's a role that we play, so we take that very seriously. Uh, I won't spend a lot of time on our fleet and facilities capital, but if you have any questions about any specific item on there, I'd be happy to address it, or have Mike Carr help me with it.
Yeah, could you explain the vehicle replacement? Uh, it seems kind of high. Do you have a, is that the, um, what's the, city mayor, what's the name of the group we established that?
The FARB, the Fleet Asset Review Board. And all the vehicles that are on this list were reviewed by the review board, and I believe, what was the initial list? It was about $2 million plus or minus? Is that about right?
Yeah, so this just includes the, uh, vehicle replacement fund, which is general service, which in this case is, uh, emergency services, so it does not include all the additional vehicles citywide. Um, and including this is the two rebuilds for the two pump trucks, uh, which is a huge cost savings over replacing one pump truck, which is in excess of $500,000 for one, uh, truck replacement. We're going to be rebuilding the two trucks, um, for approximately the same cost of one purchase. Um, but yes, this was approved by the fleet asset review board, uh, at our first meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Also wanted to back up a minute to the org chart too, and just say that with the additional responsibilities in, in recreation services, I feel really good about moving forward. A lot of qualified people that came over with that, so I don't think we'll miss a beat. I think we're going to gain efficiencies, and we won't miss a beat. Okay, some of the capital for recreation services, again, a lot of thought when we do these things is, is based in economic development. It's in creating spending in the community. Uh, it's, it's all about creating revenue and making Prescott a great place to live. I'll, I'll start with the open space acquisitions. Um, you know, obviously, we won't spend the 3.8 million dollars in there, but I am very excited about a couple of projects that we are negotiating on currently, that I think will have, uh, great effect on the livability in the community, as well as create a lot of additional spending through visitation. Uh, additionally, there's some trail connections in there, one of which we're working on currently, which will, um, provide great connectivity for our trail system. We talk about this all the time, but our goal is to be, you know, on the tip of everybody's tongue when it comes to outdoor recreation destinations, and we do that through building recreation infrastructure.
Uh, mayor, can I? So, Joe, this, this 3.8, this is money that was set aside from the prior tax.
From the prior tax, from the street.
That's been designated from the past year.
Councilman Lozelle, that is correct. Yes. I'll talk more about the golf cart replacements in the next slide. Uh, the pickleball restrooms, uh, you know, that's going to come out of impact fees, which is appropriate in this case with the expansion of, of Pioneer Park. Uh, I will point out that, uh, the first pickleball tournament is going to be at the end of, uh, the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth of, uh, July, which is a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which supports tourism goals of midweek visitation, and, uh, that's 252 players, so that's just the beginning of that. So, this is a support, uh, facility that will be paid for out of impact fees, but will also, um, help support some economic development. Uh, I'm really excited about the inline hockey partnership. This is something that hopefully will be coming to council. Uh, Mayor Obergeorg had made this connection, uh, with, uh, the Coyotes, who have a similar program to what the Diamondbacks did when they built Ziegler Field. Uh, and our responsibility would just be to get the site ready. Uh, we're looking at a couple of sites, uh, possibly Willow Creek Park is, is one of those sites, but again, we'll bring this to you, uh, when we have, uh, some more assurances that'll, it'll move forward. But I spoke with the gentleman, uh, last week, and he feels confident that we'll be one of the, uh, uh, communities that are chosen. So, here again, this is going to create more tournament play for our inline hockey facilities. Uh, we are currently have one at Pioneer, and they host their tournaments in April and in October. Again, that shoulder season, midweek stuff, uh, so this is a great opportunity. Uh, Akron Park is just some developer funds, uh, to do some improvements at Akron Park, which, uh, will be done by the end of this fiscal year, uh, we're hopeful. It's in, in the planning process, but we've got a lot of stuff ordered. Uh, area, the picnic area expansion program, again, out of impact fees. Uh, and with that, if you have any other questions on capital, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, just to make this clear for everybody that is just seeing this $4.6 million dollar capital improvement for Parks and Rec, if I'm reading this right, for the budget year of eighteen, the one coming up, only $19,000 is coming in, $19,800 is coming out of the general fund. The rest of it is from other funds.
Council, Councilman Lozelle, that is correct.
And I have another, uh, comment here, it's one, a couple down below. The Goldwater Lake design for nineteen that's projected, not spent, or even approved, um, is $70,000. And again, I, I'm not saying that that's not worth it, but what I don't see here is something that, that Gene and, and I mentioned yesterday, was, uh, maybe a line here for, uh, the rodeo grounds, for like an engineering and design, something of that nature. Maybe something to be put it there for, so we can start tracking that.
Councilman Lozelle, that, that's a great idea, maybe in one of the future fiscal years, as the master planning rolls out, that would help us identify what funding is needed a lot better. And, and thank you too for pointing out the Goldwater Lake. Um, you know, the opportunity to open up Lower Goldwater Lake has really just recently been an opportunity for us due to the liabilities associated with, uh, water, the old water treatment facility, um, there. And I, I've got to commend Public Works for being proactive and being our partner and helping to mitigate that, um, by a combination of demolition and, and bringing fill-in, which will be relatively inexpensive. But again, it creates up an opportunity for us to create more revenue, to plan the lower lake, and, uh, the $70,000 that was, uh, budgeted for fiscal year nineteen was really looking at a different part of the lake, um, and doing some improvements there, but, uh, I would want to fast forward with the opportunity to open up Goldwater Lake, because it's, it's a spectacular 6,000-foot elevation ponderosa pine lake, which is a, a neat asset for us to have.
Thank you. Why couldn't we use impact fees for that?
We certainly could. Um, I think we had, uh, again, this was based on some of the other stuff that we were doing, but that's something we could look at in that fiscal year nineteen, because you're absolutely right, mayor.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, mayor. Here again, I don't know if this question's for Michael, for the attorney, or for you, Joe. Um, while we all here know that I didn't support setting aside $3.8 million for open space, uh, the majority of the council did. So, respecting that, do we have any ideas as to what we're actually setting the $3.8 million aside for? What open space has been targeted to use those taxpayer funds for? I mean, are you able to say that? And that's why.
At this point, some, there's some things that we've considered, or we've had some people approach us, but because it's a real estate transaction, it's the kind of thing that we probably need to talk about going forward in executive session.
All right, well, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the golf course, and first, I've got to say, uh, golf course is about more than revenues versus expenses. For example, it does, again, create spending in the community. Uh, for an example, are the, um, Father and Son Tournament, which sells out in less than 24 hours, uh, 567 players, I believe, creates an economic impact from that three-day event, and people stay before and stay after. So, there's things that don't show up on, on the revenues versus the expenses. Another thing that doesn't show up is its positioning, um, down the road as far as where it's located. It's located in our, uh, future growth area. Uh, rooftops are going up, that should help support, uh, the golf course in the future, creating a better customer base for both food and beverage and, and the golf operations. Some of the things, uh, on this, if you look at the FY18 budget and you see the increase in the deficit, uh, that's due largely to, um, we, we didn't, we weren't carrying any debt service on the carts, because we had paid the carts off, um, in this fiscal year in our, your capital budget, we have budgeted to replace those carts, which typically had been done for four years. Uh, I ran those carts five years, and I've found that I think that's attainable for us, so that helps us a little bit, um, long-term. So, uh, picking up the debt service on, on that, which is, I think, believe about $115,000 a year, and then, of course, the increase in capital over the previous year, uh, make that number appear a little bit higher. Another, uh, revenue that's not going to show up on here because it hasn't been received yet or booked is, uh, we did sell some of the right-of-way for the, um, highway expansion, uh, that goes along the golf course, uh, which also affects our budget in a negative way. We had to anticipate that there's going to be a little bit of a demise in play and a slowdown in revenue, um, based on, you know, accessibility of the property. The good news is, long-term, uh, it'll have a positive effect on the golf course, especially with the, uh, roundabout that'll be located on Perkins Drive, which will create an opportunity to directly go to the clubhouse or the restaurant or whatever. Uh, and they're going to drop that road grade there about six feet, so visibility then becomes much better. So, long-term, it's going to help us. Fiscal year eighteen, it's going to hurt us. Uh, and again, you know, the golf course is about more than, uh, revenues versus expenses, there's other, uh, hidden, uh, assets in there. Uh, so with that, do you have any questions on the golf course?
Uh, Joe, why has the Billy Casper Golf operation expenditure gone up 9.2% from last year to coming budget year?
Councilwoman Wilcox, that's a, a good question. A large part of that is the debt service on the carts. Uh, that's, I believe, about 115,000. Another thing that affects us, uh, it affected us in the last part of fiscal year seventeen too, is the minimum wage increase. Uh, so that's part of what's happening with the 9.2 increase also.
Um, I think we're going to be talking about the, uh, loan we have, uh, the general fund for the, the golf course. Is this, uh, going to add to that loan value?
It will. Well, the deficit would, the deficit would have to be made, be made up from the general fund, so yes, that will increase that.
So, are we going to talk about that now, or do you, or are we going to talk that later here?
I think we were planning on talking that later, maybe when we come with the capital request for the, uh, carts might be an opportunity for us to do a much expanded, uh, presentation on the golf course and operations.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I would just like to add, uh, Joe, I know, you know, also when people want to come for conferences, then a lot of people want to come and play golf, and I know they do a lot of, of conference golfing out there.
Correct. And, and we, one of the things that we're doing in this next fiscal year is we've got a, a salesperson out there that's going to be more incentivized and, and trained better on attracting these banquets, which I do see, uh, opportunities, and we've done over the last few years, increased the banquets at the Centennial Center significantly, but there's still capacity in there. So, you know, while the golf course is, the, is it, the golf business is a tough business, you know, we take it very seriously to close that gap as much as we can, and we have. Um, you know, we've, we've improved the bottom line considerably over the last three years, but we'll continue to do that. We'll continue to be creative, we'll continue to find creative ways to create more revenue streams there. One of the difficulties in golf is, is more golfers dying than being born. Uh, so what we have out there right now is Mac McCarty and John Gumby, who recently retired from, uh, Prescott Lakes, are doing a fat, a fabulous junior golf program. So, we're trying to build golfers, uh, but again, more are dying than being born, but we recognize that, and we're trying to make the adjustments where we can.
Well, and I think you service Emory Riddle quite a bit, right? The Emory Riddle students play there some, and then also some of the high schools.
Correct. We support Chino, Chino Valley High School, Prescott High School, um, Emory Riddle, which it helps us really, because again, we're building golfers, creating that interest in the sport, and with Emory Riddle, um, they host some pretty big tournaments out there, which have pretty good economic impact.
And the Special Olympics, still.
Which is wonderful.
Yeah, it is.
They, they have a great time out there. You know when they're out there, because there's a lot of.
Thursdays I know.
Hollering going on. Thank you very much, unless there's any other questions.
Joe, I got a question. Uh, excuse me, mayor. Let's just take Billy Casper Golf by itself. How much of an increase is this year are they expecting from us for their management operation?
Well, their budget request is, is that increase of 9.2%.
But I thought that there were other things in that budget request that you were talking about.
For what?
If you take out the 110,000 for debt service, it's 50,000 direct related to the minimum wage, uh, increase needed for personnel.
Okay, so that's 50,000 more than what they had last, or what they needed last year?
Correct.
Okay. And that works out to what kind of percentage?
Very small.
Okay. All right. Very small will do.
Now, I feel like I'm back at school. I'm waiting for the finance guy, so he's using my calculator, so I don't feel too bad.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, pretty close.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim has got a question.
Thank you. Um, I thought we had sort of a contractor relationship with Billy Casper Golf, in that, um, their responsibility was to take care of their employees, they're not our employees. Um, I don't know why it would be justifiable to take out of the monies of the city to pay their employees more money.
Well, uh, Councilman, Councilman Lamerson, what we have with Billy Casper is a management agreement. So, they are their employees, so they pay them, but we support the golf course through the Golf, Golf Course Enterprise Fund. So, really, it's, it's a bit of a, it's a management contract, and they hire their employees, the employees are their employees, but we fund the golf course. Does that make sense?
No. If it made sense to me, I wouldn't have asked the question. I don't understand why we would take on the fiscal responsibility of their employees. Okay? Now, I understand why we're taking care of the grass, understand why we're taking care of the buildings. I can even buy into why we're taking care of the golf carts. Those are municipal property, but they're not municipal employees. That, that's, I don't know why it's the city's responsibility to make up the $10 minimum wage law that the state of Arizona imposed on Billy Casper Golf. They imposed it on me and everybody else on the planet, and nobody's subsidizing me.
Well, again, like, the costs of, of operating the golf course are still the city's responsibility. We pay Billy Casper, uh, to manage that, and primarily, what Billy Casper brings to the table for us is a much more savvy marketing, uh, expertise. Um, they have, um, a lot of, uh, obviously, resources that we wouldn't have. They manage over 150 golf courses across the United States. But essentially, the, the costs associated with the golf course are still the city's responsibilities. Billy McCasper Golf has paid a fee to manage the golf course and do the marketing and all the other things to create more revenue.
I, I hear you. Doesn't mean I agree with it, but I hear you.
Joe, do you recall, have, what is the, the?
Joe, do you recall, what is the mechanism or the formula that we pay Billy Casper Golf? Is it based on rounds of golf? I don't have, I just don't recall. It wasn't a flat fee?
Well, it's a flat fee along with some incentives that are based on revenue, creating revenue.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Got one more?
Thank you. You know, this begs to the larger issue of, is it always advantageous to privatize whatever? I think that people get the wrong impression of privatization. Privatization still means that Billy Casper Golf, in order to want to continue to manage Antelope Hills Golf Course, has to make money. And I think people forget the fact that, oh my God, it's private, so must be more efficient. It must be this, and it must be that. And in actuality, yeah, that may happen in some instances, but by and large, they've still got to make money, and they have a choice. The choice is, we could take up our, we could pick up our marbles and leave, because you're not covering our $50,000 in minimum wage increases.
Councilman Shears, correct. We would have, in the old model, where they were city employees, one of the biggest savings for us was to not have those employees in the pro shop side, in the restaurant, be city employees with all the benefits and whatnot. So that, that's helped with that bottom line considerably. So I guess the best way to explain it is, those employees would have been, under the old model, employees of ours, we still would have been affected by the minimum wage, but we would have had, the full-time staff would have had the benefits and all of the, all of the benefits that full-time employees for the city of Prescott have. And this is, it's a public-private partnership. We have our role to play, which is the maintenance. We have to maintain a good golf course so that people want to play there. Billy Casper's role in this is to market and sell those rounds and do what they do at over 150 golf courses across the United States. That's where we didn't do a very good job, because we're a government. We're not, we're not the private sector. We don't really understand how to market effectively and do all the things that they do with their extensive knowledge. So it's a partnership.
Thank you. As city manager, I think we are looking at some areas where we think contracting out does make a lot of sense. I agree, in this case, I think, you know, you need the expertise of somebody that understands, you know, golf culture.
You do. And this is a hybrid. Because, you know, to be quite honest, it's a very soft market for the purchase of golf courses. I mean, I think you guys looked at previously the outright sale, and there isn't a lot of takers, because it's a very, Joe alluded, it's an aging demographic, and there's more golf courses in this country than there is demand for rounds to play. So finding a private partner to run the ops and keep your fringe benefits down is probably your best bet if you're trying to run a municipal.
Correct. I think it's important to realize that this is kind of a unique situation, but there are a lot of contracting out opportunities, I think, could save us money.
I think that's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to wrap up the first workshop, there's a few slides summarizing the other funds that were wrapped into some of these departments we just talked about. So I'll be very brief so we can get to Public Works. But the first fund of interest is the bed tax fund. This, these itemized lines here, this is a tentative proposal. What we, what we do is, this goes through the Tourism Advisory Committee, who then recommends the final allocation of these funds to City Council, which is adopted August, September timeframe. There's a few in here that are new. You'll see Joe Baines just introduced the projects that may, are proposing to be funded out of this bed tax, inline hockey partnership, golf course, cart path paving. And then the airport events line, which is the October West event, there will be a transfer, we're proposing to transfer funds from this bed tax fund into the airport to cover that event. The appropriated use of fund balance increases just basically doubles, and that is a result of an increasing fund balance. We appropriated that for any things that council or staff may find advantageous next year. So essentially, the entire available funds is being budgeted. Any questions on this?
Um, excuse me, Lars, can you explain why the support for the arts line is dropping from $35,000 to $13,000?
Sure. Go ahead.
Madam Commissioner, the support for the arts folks have not spent the amount of money that's been allocated, and the cumulative total of money that they still have that they haven't sent out to agencies is the difference between what would have been the normal contribution and this amount of money. In other words, they have a pot of, is it about $25,000?
Thirty-five.
That they need, $30,000 that they haven't allocated, and before we went over and above, we suggested that we would reduce ours and let them spend the money that they've already been given.
Okay. So if they should come forward in the next few months before we actually make our final allocation, that could increase?
Yeah. If that was the desire of council, most definitely, you could have considered that.
I've got a question on the parking garage, the $20,000. I think we do get some receipts from the parking garage during special events. Does that go into the general fund?
Yes. Yeah, the parking fees that we collect do go into the general fund.
So what's this $20,000 here for?
This is a transfer to offset the cost of the parking garage. So the idea was the tourism effect of the parking garage, no, bed tax can help fund this operations. So the revenues collected by the parking garage just by no means cover the entire cost of operating that, so this is just another way to help that.
Okay.
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead.
Lars, and I don't know if this is Joe, or, but last year, we budgeted $30,000 for tournaments, and zero was spent. Now, we've done another $30,000. What is that for, and why wouldn't we spend that? Not that I'm arguing that we didn't spend it, but...
Yeah. We just haven't made that request yet. It will be made, so the funds just haven't transferred over yet.
Okay. And then my other one, I don't see John Cox out here. I saw him out in the lobby. Airport events, is this, are we going to expand what we did this last year with that fly-in? Do some more events such as that, John?
Councilmember Lizelle, you are correct. This is really the, I want to say, the beginning of implementation of a partnership with Emory Riddle to host what they would view as a fly-in, airfare, I'm sorry, is the correct terminology for that. And, yeah, this was, I want to consider it seed money for some future events in partnership with Emory Riddle that annually have a technological aviation affair in October that partners with their alumni event.
Will it be exciting?
Yes, we hope so.
Okay. You have other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
The other fund, special revenue fund is a grants fund. Here's a, just a general list of what we're budgeting in each department, as well as the contingency line at the bottom. If there's any specific questions on this, departments could help you answer. But the fire department mainly is the safer grant, and then much of these other are related to fields reduction. Any questions on grants?
Mayor Protem's got one. Thank you. Could we elaborate a little bit on CBD, CDBG grant monies and where those allocations are being? So, since we're doing this.
You know, this, this $503,000 is the available funds for next year. I think the final allocation of that is...
Thank you, Tom.
Mayor, Council, Councilman, Mayor Protem.
It's okay, either way, Tom.
I'm working on it. So the city's allocation for CDBG is approximately $245,000 per year, and this represents carryover from two previous years, and what we anticipate to get is for this next program year. So as we work through those backlog of projects, ultimately, we anticipate spending somewhere around $500,000 in CDBG funds this coming year.
Thank you. And could we elaborate just a little bit on that backlog of projects? I think, you know, the public has a right to know what we're going to spend a half-million of their dollars on.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it's a very public process. And in fact, the council has appointed a committee, the Citizen Divisor.
I understand that, but not everybody in the public goes to the CDBG grant.
That's correct. And so, and for many folks may not know, that is also a program that's heavily governed by federal regulations. In fact, it goes so far as to say is it's the mother of all red tape grant programs.
Thank you for pointing that out, too.
And it's, it's, so it's very time-consuming. So we're either in an application process, which is, we begin in November, December of each year, through a process of council adopting an annual allocation plan, and then we take each of those projects, go out to bid following the city's procurement code. And roughly 65% of the funds that are received are for bricks and mortar, actual construction-type projects. 20% of what we receive is used towards administration and planning. And in fact, that's one of the things that we had addressed as part of our reclassification of that position, the request that we have this year. The remaining portion of CDBG is done through our CAPR program, which is providing the annual report to HUD and our quarterly reports to HUD as to how the money is spent. Some of the projects that were anticipating seeing be completed from previous years is West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, has about a $70,000, $75,000 project. There's also a joint project between Yavapai Trails Association and the Prescott Parks and Recreation Department, which enhances pedestrian mobility from the Dexter neighborhood into the downtown with new bridge structures. So those are two examples of some carryover projects that we're currently working on.
Thank you. Are we intending on using any of this? Because I know, having attended a lot of this in the past, we've used a lot of the money that we've gotten from CDBG grant-type stuff to upgrade sidewalks and pedestrian capability and things like that to get to different places, and infrastructure that takes care of various different things. So when you say bricks and mortar, there's more to it than just bricks and mortar in the sense that most people would think of bricks and mortar.
That's correct. And there's a very good example in the Dexter neighborhood. Couple of years ago, the city spent over $2 million in upgrading small water lines and small water mains. We took that opportunity to go in and place sidewalks. I can't remember the exact number of lineal feet, but literally close to $200,000 worth of sidewalks as that construction was occurring, which enhanced the livability and the quality of life in the area.
Thank you. So when we see $500,000 being set aside from the federal government and for the city of Prescott, it's going for some fairly significant benefit to the entire community?
That's correct. And on the, on the project, not on the capital project, bricks and mortar type site, other beneficiaries, such as Meals on Wheels gets funding for this, for senior meals and other projects similar to that.
Thank you, Tom. I've got a couple of questions on the Wildfire Academy, Gila River. Is that separate from what we do out at Emory Riddle, or is that the same thing?
Mayor, that's a grant that Tony applies for each year that's usually awarded through Gila River, through the Indian tribe, but that goes to contribute to the Wildfire Academy. Yes, sir.
Also on the county Title III grant, FireWise, is that the funding that we use to clear or make FireWise various areas of the city?
Yes. We use it for not only FireWise, but just creating defensible space to create...
So is that the funding that's going to be used by Joe Baines and his folks?
Some of that will be proportioned off to that, yes, sir.
Okay. Next one is on bulletproof vests. Is that the funding that, probably don't have anybody here from the police department, is that the funding that we got from the Western Rack? That was a portion to us? Does anybody know, or is this a...
Ah, we got a cop right there.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure he's a...
He can model it.
Oh, we'll get back to you on that one, mayor. We'll research and get you that information.
Because I know we gave them a pretty significant plus-up for bulletproof vests, and I just wondered if this is a separate grant?
It's most likely is, but we'll need to verify it, because I don't know for sure.
And could somebody explain to me the Alzheimer's grant for the police? I'd like to know what that's about.
That's, that has been a grant to help train police officers to deal with people who have Alzheimer's that they may run into in the community, acting, you know, differently, and need to address that as opposed to thinking...
It also helps the officers identify...
Yeah, that's...
If, if...
Okay, so it's a training function?
It's a training function, yes. Many of the, many of the police grants are training.
It's a great program, by the way.
All right, thanks.
So here's the wrap-up slide on various other funds. I think the majority of the interest here is on the ending fund balance. If you just, you know, look at the parks, fire, library, police, streets, impact fees, you can, you can see the, the projects that are planned in each one of those, as well as the ending fund balance. Is there any questions on any of this?
Not on this, because I don't see it. This is my little deal every year, Mark, and I don't, didn't see it on this, or maybe I missed it in this one, showing the, my favorite membership fee to an organization in town.
Councilmember Lizelle, I believe you're referencing G-Prep, is it my...
Correct.
Creskin, in terms of figuring that out. As you know, G-Prep has been without an executive director for the better part of a year. And about a week ago, I reached out to the executive director and said, in light of the fact that an executive director hasn't been present, is it possible that the city's contribution for FY18 could be waived? And he thought it was a really good idea. In fact, he's approached all the other partners, and we received correspondence just yesterday the day before, that all participants are waiving, or everybody's contributions planned for FY18 are being waived. So our participation this year will just be whatever staff time I have going over there to their meetings.
Okay.
It is in the budget, because all this happened in the past couple days. It can be removed, or we could just leave it in there and not spend it.
I would rather remove it.
We can take it out.
Yes, we'll definitely take that out before we bring the tenet budget back. And I just wanted to point out, again, we already talked about it yesterday, the $6 million special revenue fund for the PSPRS tax, if it passes the Prop 443. And again, revenues don't come in, expenses don't get made on these special revenue funds.
The debt service fund is very minimal. The last payment for GL bonds was in FY17, so the lakes have been paid off. With that, this workshop one has been finalized. It looks like we have about 50 minutes for the second workshop. We'll see how this goes.
Mayor and council, just also additional information. About a week ago, the mayor had requested kind of an update on where we were in terms of design of all the capital projects within Public Works' sphere. He had requested specifically the streets projects, but what we got from Public Works was more comprehensive. We got all their projects. I have a list of that, and I think it's pretty good information for you guys to have in front of you as we discuss going forward. So let me go ahead and distribute it.
So just in an effort to keep moving, we'll start again today, today, our second workshop. Lot about Public Works and the airport, so we're talking about infrastructure projects significantly here. Just wanted to run through the funds relatively quickly, because, again, as we talked about, we're trying to make this department-focused, but we do have to address our funds just quickly as we go through. The public work, Public Works operating budget here, you can see the changes, a lot of the changes and variations here relate to the movement of field and facilities, divisions around, and movement of employees from one area of Public Works to another. That's what you see a lot on the increases and decreases. Some of the, the changes also are just adjusting budget to better reflect historic trends that we're seeing. Some budgets were significantly high year after year, so we brought those down to where they needed to be. There is also some increases related to the new software, the ACILA inspection program... There is also some increases related to the new software, the ASILA inspection program that is being rolled out now that we talked about, and community development as well, as well as some additional engineering inspection fees related to, um, to bridge evaluation that needs to be done on some of our older bridges. There's a significant increase in solid waste here, as well, as you can see. That also relates to what we talked about in the Fleet Department, that bond, that 2007 MPC bond, we're talking about looking at refunding next year. Part of it was used to expand here, so 1.2 million of that increase is related to looking at that refunding. It's an appropriation to allow us to look at that as we get to that point of the year. There are also some increases related to the Fleet maintenance cost and solid waste to better reflect the actual historic trend that they've been seeing, and a few other minor changes. The org chart and...
Let's go back to the previous chart. Under capital, looks like they budgeted 63. If I understand this, they've spent about 25 million?
I, I believe, uh, they're budgeted to spend about 25, yes. They're estimated, they're ending, what actually it will be, we'll find out when we get there, but again, they estimate how far they'll get along their projects.
And then they're asking for 70 million in FY18?
Right, and we'll go into that in a lot of detail here in a few minutes.
Yeah, we're talking about almost $50 million difference in, well, 40 million from what they said they were going to do and what they actually did, and then they're asking for more in 18, so we're going to be explaining that further detail?
Yeah, Mr. Hash will be explaining that and discussing that in just a few. I have the org charts here, and of course, Public Works Department is here to address any changes. Public, the, um, the org chart is actually on two different slides here, six and seven, because it's relatively wide. And again, with that, I would point out just the staffing changes that's on the upper right corner of that slide. A lot of that differential between the departments just has to do with movements of people between the departments and then consolidation of some positions from Field and Facilities that were split across different, um, different departments. Please stop me if you have any questions. I don't want to rush anybody. The discussion we've had is great, I know these things get kind of long, but, you know, I'm available for the next four days straight, so we can do this every morning.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. The slide eight...
Even Friday are going to work?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Streets and Open Space Fund on slide eight. These are the fund rollups, just to kind of touch on these, because they all deal with individual fund balances and some issues there before we get into the detail of capital projects and other issues in Public Works that Henry wants to address. Again, Streets and Open Space, big funding sources are 1% dedicated sales tax. We talked about that in the general fund, again, we're seeing that same growth here. Very good, we're holding it flat. Highway user revenue is up because of the state additional appropriation they did in current year 17. That's also going to be done in fiscal 18. The partnering projects deal with Carlton and Alarkin Street, drainage issues with those streets. Of course, we have our streetlight fee, which is on everybody's utility bill, and then the miscellaneous is down, slightly related to interest estimates based on the fact that their capital project shows some spending their cash, and you can't earn interest if you don't have cash. So that, that is down. Again, budget projections for revenues are projections and they are what they are when they come in. In operations, we had a market increase, we had an increase in the personnel related to the market study. There was some issue with some of their equipment operators and stuff, which was resolved, so you see that increase in comparison here. The non-operating personnel, again, we talked about that, the bridge evaluations and some, some costs related to the underground storage tank at the shop, getting rid of that, and then a little bit of increase in utilities. And again, we're going to talk about the capital in detail, keeping in mind, in streets alone, as the mayor was alluding to, they budgeted 30, they projected to spend about 14 million. Year-to-date, as of today, they've spent 9.8. So they might not even hit their 14, but again, that's hard to time these projects as how quickly they will be done, but again, I'll let Henry address that in detail. The fund balance, starting the year, we're looking at the 19 million, 19 and a half million available for these capital projects. Again, if you, if we don't spend it, it accumulates and it's available to do these projects when they get to them. The water fund is, again, an enterprise fund, unlike the streets, which was a special revenue, but of course, the revenues here are supportive. You see a reduction in our budget for water sales. That deals more with the fact that the projections we used in 17 related to a rate study that was four years old, didn't take into account the change in water usage, quite sufficient, so we moved the revenues to more closely reflect what we've been receiving. Obviously, you can see our estimate is 13.7, so we're projecting it to be up. We had a 2% increase in January. There are no more rate increases scheduled that council has approved, although we will be looking at a rate study in this capital project list that we're going to be going through. So that'll unfold over the next 18 months. Again, that takes a long time because of impact fee requirements on those rate studies.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If you can go back to another slide, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right. FY18, total revenues, 20 million. Total expenditures, 37 million. Let's just call it 34, less the open space. And the reason we're able to have more expenditures than revenue is because of the rollover of the 19 million?
Yeah, the 19 million you see at the bottom of the screen here, again, that's money that is accumulated from capital projects that have not been done yet, so it's available to hit that 22.8, 22.9 million that they're projecting for capital projects next year.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other questions on this one, too. The highway user revenue, is that the total amount we get from the HERF fund?
Yes.
Okay, so I know this last year, they increased HERF funding for the municipalities by 30 million, so looks like we didn't get much of that at all.
It's distributed based on the HERF formula, which is relatively complicated, but it is, does have a population component, also has a county population component, as well as a location of the fuel sales. But the bump of the 30 million to us, as I recall, was about, I haven't looked to Lars, but I think it was about $40,000. So it is not a huge amount to us.
Yeah, and I know that they approved another 30 million this year.
Yes, and that's in that projection for next year, that 3,461, we've already included that.
Okay. The miscellaneous, interest earnings, is that interest we earn on investing the money that we have that's not being utilized?
Correct.
Okay.
It's also a big part of that is the Build America bonds that we issued for the Williamson Valley Road project have a rebate that we get because they were taxable bonds compared to our tax-exempt status. The sequester issue in the federal government has reduced that, but we still do receive significant funds from that to help offset those debt service costs.
So where do we park our funds while we're waiting to actually be able to expend them? Do we have that with the Arizona State Treasurer's Office, or...
We issue, every six months, we send council an investment report, and there we talk about where we park our funds. We do use the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool, which is done through the State Treasurer's Office. We also do use independent investments that we do through mainly mortgage-backed arrangements with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac-type items to increase our yield above that that we can get at the State Treasurer's Office. Again, all of our investments as a government are very focused on principal preservation, so we do not get into equities or corporate bonds or other things that have a potential of loss of principal. So our yields are not hu- huge, you know, they vary significantly, but it's been about 1%, 1.5% over the last couple of years, unfortunately.
Well, I think it's important for the public to know that we, we just don't let the sun's funds fallow. We actually invest them, we try and earn some interest on them while, until they can actually be used for a project.
Exactly. We try to match the return or the maturity on those longer-term investments and mortgage-backed securities to correspond with our capital projects, but it's always a challenge because of the timing of capital projects. Water fund, as we started, has a lot of the same issues, a lot of capital in these funds. The revenues, as I mentioned, are down closer to what we've been seeing. Not a big issue for concern in the water fund. The water fund is a relatively healthy fund, as we can see from the $42 million fund balance in this fund. The Aqua-Fur Protection Fee and the other water revenues, again, were adjusted closer to what we're actually seeing. The initial budget was done based on the rate study, which was a couple of years old at this point. The impact fees were holding about level this year. Excuse me. Because of the, of what we're seeing, they are close, there's water resource partnering, that relates to the Big Chino and the tri-party agreement and the, I'm sorry, comprehensive agreement, number one, the partnership with SRP in the town of Prescott Valley. The, the expenses, pretty level. Again, we have a rate study included in the, in the non-operating personnel costs. The debt service relates to WIFSA loans that we currently have on some water projects that we have out there. The water, the capital is split out between the different funding sources in this fund, so you see the 21, the three-quarter, and 2.3, and 11 million. We'll get into those details on the capital sheets, which are the next few slides. Again, very, one of our healthier funds is our water fund, $42 million there at the bottom. And then even with this very significant capital program of $35 million, still having a $13 million fund balance projected.
So on the water sales, that decrease is probably due to conservation efforts?
The decrease, as I said, the original budget was related to a rate study, which is a couple of years old, although it had projections out, so we were using them. But yes, we have seen some reduction in water usage through conservation or, you know, second home, more second homes, and had been projected in the, in the, in the original water study. Waste water fund, again, we had another rate increase in January this year. We are showing continued rate growth here. The impact fees, again, projected to what we've been seeing, so those are up. We do have a WIFSA loan budgeted, we have not finalized that loan, that'll be coming to council as soon as the environmental assessment, a few other things that engineering is working on are done with that, but we are, have projects associated with those, so we do show the draws as revenue. The, the personnel, again, is actually down in this, has to do with the movement of employees between different departments through the reorganization this year. The non-operating is also down, although we do have an increase in there of 300,000 for some, oh, that 300,000 one's in prior year for affluent tank, and that is out this year, so that's part of that reduction. Debt service is down from the budget, just because of the, the fact that we haven't been able to get this WIFSA loan completed yet, so we had projected it would be started already, so that, that WIFSA loans do not become debt until you actually draw on them, so you don't pay debt service, unlike a typical bond where you issue it and hold those monies. Again, the capital here, we're looking at another $13 million in capital between water system and the impact fees capital, and again, the, has a fund balance in this fund, not nearly as healthy as the water fund. And the capital, there's some challenges in the capital plan, which we'll talk about in a few minutes when we get to it, as we look at some of the bigger projects like the centralization. And to that, these are slides...
Let's go back to that for just for a minute. So under the wastewater system capital projects, in both cases, the impact, we were at 8.6 million budgeted, spent 2.5, we're back up to 8.3. You say that's due to the consolidation?
No, I'm sorry, my issues on the, my comments on the consolidation were about the operating revenue. The capital has to do with the timing of the capital projects that Public Works had in the budget. You know, they project to get 8.6 million done in this year, but the projects, you know, haven't progressed to the point that we've paid contractors or that the monies do contractors, so we're only going to spend 2.5. It all has to do with the timing of the projects.
So what's the WIFSA for?
The WIFSA is for a couple of those projects on the sheet. They're for some of the centralization projects. We have a loan application into WIFSA. There's a lot of requirements with WIFSA in relation to what has to be done to complete the loan, and there's an environmental comment period, and I, we'll have Public Works speak to that a little bit more, because they're the ones running that. As soon as that environmental study is done and out for comment, we can proceed with securing that loan with WIFSA, and then as the capital projects happen, we will make draws to WIFSA, and then those draws will be shown as the...
Yeah, that capital project is a consolidation?
Yes, I believe they're part of the consolidation.
Okay, so if we get the WIFSA loan, are we going to have to increase our fees?
Yeah, if we look at, and I got these next two graphs just to show our current fee, so we can talk about that, and we can talk about that when we get to the, to the capital sheet, but the timing on some of those projects will require a pretty significant increase in our wastewater rates. Currently, these are the rate, our rate comparison to our surrounding communities and even the valley. As you can see, as in the residential rate category, we are with the white, I'm sorry, it's not white, it's blue, being water and the red being sewer. Our wastewater, we are more, you know, we are kind of on the upper end of the scale of our rates already. With the projects as scheduled, with the debts that would, loans that would need to be issued, we'd be looking, just a rough estimate, at about a 70% increase in our wastewater rates. You know, whether that was done across the board, 70%, or done a different way would be decided as we go through a rate study, or, and then I'll let Henry talk to the capital aspect of it, whether these projects can be, timing of these projects could be spread out to minimize that impact on our rate payers.
So I guess, is there any way we can extend the time period in which we are actually doing the construction, so that we can keep the fees down, or, you know, we have to complete this in a very short period of time, therefore, we just have to raise the fees 70%?
Again, that's a good question, and I think Henry can address that. These are my last two slides, I just had these rates up so that we would have them in case council had questions as we look at the, at the, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more fund now there, the solid waste fund. And again, the, the only... Okay, so this is the, obviously, it's solid waste, and nothing really here, again, the capital is the issue, we had some increases. Miscellaneous was up in 2017 because of a unique item with the sale. Solid waste had a 1.2 million increase in operating costs, 850 of that was related to debt service increase for the refunding, and 25,000 was for replacement of containers and 140 for the fleet maintenance facilities, and we talked about some of those earlier already. And I, again, I don't mean to rush to these, but I did want to get you to the capital so we could talk about that today.
So transfer station fees increase, is that gray wolf, or is that, who's charging the additional fees there?
I would turn it to Public Works, if Mr. Black would like to address that. There's a $90,000 increase for those outside fees, but...
Did you ask him about the revenue increase, correct? I think he was asking about the increase in non-operating.
Transfer station fees, increase in that, was that...
Oh, okay. Mayor and council, that's revenue, that's increase in revenue. We had a fee increase back in February.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So with that, the next several slides relate to the capital. And again, just to, I'll flip through them really quick just to point out a few things and then turn over to Henry to walk through in more detail. But we separated out the centralization into its own separate little total on slide 18. And then the, like I said, the, the detail, we've separated out streets also from water, water and wastewater, other projects. We have streets, and then we have the utility and solid waste, and then we have centralization as, as separate schedules to talk about.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Sure.
It has nothing to do with capital at this point in time. I read last year that the state of Oregon had to raise their gas tax because the requirement of fuel-efficient vehicles. So they weren't getting the revenue because people were using less gas. That said, would you find that, not that I'm suggesting we use more water, but the fact that we are, we, we conserve so much water, that system that delivers, whether it's 100 gallons or 1 gallon, the system that delivers it is, costs the same?
You know, I think those are, you know, valid things, discussion points. You know, obviously, there is a system, there is a replacement need of that system, you know-
But would you say we're using less water, we're, we have less revenue because we're using less water?
Yes. And that was reflected in our last rate study as well. We addressed that very point significantly. Of course, how does that reflect to, how much more capital do you need if you're using less water?
Sure.
We'll leave that to the engineers. Get Henry to get up, we'll get him down here.
I've been dying to talk to Henry.
Me too.
Delighted to be here, and we are here to hopefully answer all of your questions. If you can't have any answers today, I'm sure we can get back to you. There are a few things we will be talking about, our capital projects, mayor and council, and mostly Mr. Oros is going to talk about it, he's in charge of it. But I want to just mention a few things. As we know, it's important for you, and we heard you loud and clear. One thing about our budget to start with, our FY18 budget has not increased despite the increase of cost of services, products, and labor. Pretty much level funded as it was the previous year. With cost increase being level funded, reality means we are reducing costs, so that's pretty important. I know the customer service is very important for all of you. It is for me, it is for all of us. We have tried very hard to improve our customer service, and I think we have, we have come a long way. We've come from people complaining to you and all for years. Really, we have more allies than compliments these days than we have complaints. That's a good thing. We have developed a lot of good customer service policy, which, mayor, one of the things you had, getting to yes. In fact, our policy is getting to yes. We had several lunch and learn workshops with all of our stakeholders, developers, contractors, contractor association, real estate people, engineers. And we tried to work with them, see how we can get to yes. And those were very, very positive and did a lot for us. Now, you know, our budget is a bit complicated, so we really started our budget process eight, nine months ago. I want to thank only our own staff and you, but our finance department, especially Mr. Woodfield and Mr. Johnson have been very, very supportive and helpful to us. We had to go through the question day after day after day, so I want to thank them for A few things happened that you are aware of, the transfer of two divisions to streets and solid waste to Public Works. I believe it was a very great move, it was time. Generally, there are Public Works everywhere else, and it didn't take long before we realized efficiency and working together and teamwork, and we anticipate this would improve and would be cost savings coming up in the future. So we want to thank you for that. It has been really good, and the transition was very, very smooth and no, no issues at all. We also did implementation of a lucidity program into our streets and solid waste. This is a software program for keeping track of everything we do, a major cost saving for that. We have had issues, now you're emphasizing more on pavement and sidewalk program management. You know, sometimes we cannot correct the mistakes that happened in the past, but we can certainly learn from them. And because of it, we do, we are really emphasizing, in fact, we have a new position that would be just in charge of pavement and sidewalk without adding a staff. We just restructured. So that is going to help us a lot. I believe, you know, you have received many calls and some of them justified, so we are looking into all of those. We transferred the sign shop staff to our traffic staff. They used to be there when the, there was separation, they were separated. They were working with our traffic staff all these years anyway. Now we just, on paper, that's how it is. It has become a lot more efficient. And really important, again, we, we like to improve our relationship with all of our stakeholders. We sit down with them, not always easy meetings, we discuss eventually the policies that are developed or joint policies with their support. We have, you know, among many other policies that we have in Public Works, a sunset rule policy, something I've had for many years. That is, any and all calls and inquiries must be responded before the sunset of the next business day. So if you don't hear it, I'd like to hear it from you. And these are some of the, some of the highlights. As far as the capital projects, correct, we haven't spent to date what was budgeted. There were so many unanticipated things that happened during the project. But mayor and council, between now and the end of the year, which is roughly one month, we will spend or commit many millions of dollars because unless you go out, you know, we are out to bid already, the, the bid has been open for Marina Street, Highway 89, Pepin Museum, Bashford Court, they're all going to happen between now and beginning of the year. So you will see a good amount of money will be committed, and Mr. Oros will, will talk more in detail on that. As far as just the things I heard today to mention it, centralization, this was your direction two years ago to us, to go ahead with centralization, which is something that makes sense, makes more efficient operation while saving millions of dollars. We have two plans. Sometimes we have a choice, and it's good to have a choice to do things, and what we don't want to do, and we are told to do certain things by the state or federal government. On Sundog plant, we need to make improvements. $54 million, we, we will be told to do that. When we talked to you about two years ago and you directed us to go with centralization, centralization, which makes much, much more efficient operation, will cost us 42 million instead of 54 million on an old plant. We still have two plans, not as efficient. The timeliness of it, Mr. Mayor, to your question, it is, it's a policy decision. However, just my experience and experience of a professional staff here, you can only wait so long before something goes wrong and before you're told, okay, now you have one year or two year to do it. We don't want to get there. And we certainly don't want to spend money unnecessarily on the old plan, Sundog plant, because we are not doing the centralization. So my recommendation to you is, although we can perhaps push it back a year or so, not push it back too far because that may have some consequences. Obviously, we will be coming before you and discussing the time and the funding and requirements, many of that in, in future meetings. I just want to make sure I, I address that. We just don't want to spend monies that, in a plan that we are going to close. So many other things we have done just to help us as well as customer service or engineering standards, you know, we are now, I think what our customers expect on day one, that they know everything. Nobody likes surprises. In the past, we have reviewed plans, we have said some things, sort of comments that should change it. Three months later, a, a year later, or maybe new staff comes later will change it. With these standards, which we worked with all of our stakeholders, and you remember, everybody was here with 100-plus percent support, all of those issues will go away and give it another year or two would be really, really good. Unless you have any questions for me, I would ask Mr. Oros to come and talk about our capital projects, that hopefully we can answer more of your questions.
Questions, comments for the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Steve Oros, Public Works. Wanted just to kind of give you a update, highlight of where we're at with all these projects and where we're, a year to date, dollar-wise expended, and where we're going to be at here very shortly. Currently, we, as Mr. Lamar handed out, we have about 37 projects that are currently under various stages of design, which out of the 69 projects that we have between the various street, water, wastewater, solid waste funds are already moving in design right now. We have a total of 14 projects that are under construction today. We have 11 additional projects that are going either out to bid right now or going to be out to bid in the next 30 to 90 days, which Mr. Hash alluded to. And that, just the total of those new construction projects is about $31 million. So we're moving along. As Mr. Hash indicated, there were some challenges during some of the designs, land acquisition, outside resource issues, design developments that came up as we did our job to make a better project. So there was a, a little few delays in those areas. But in general, we're poised to deliver this, this program. Right now, when I mentioned we have 37 in design, of the 69 projects, 46 of those are in some stage of moving forward at this point. There's a number of projects that are purchases that are in this capital program for next year, either it's vehicles or equipment and such. Those are able to move forward fairly quickly. We do have another 13 projects starting in the various funds as soon as the budgets are approved for FY18. Some of those are very quick projects. Other projects will take time to get moving and develop during the fiscal year. The centralization projects, two of those are under construction now. Our utilities division has been working closely with us on the timing of those projects, the needs. Mr. Hash alluded to the funds that may need to be expended at the current Sundog Treatment Facility if we don't move forward with the centralization projects. So there is some timing over the next three years that we need to complete the centralization. We're already moving forward with construction of two elements. We have two more elements of the centralization project that are around 60% design and moving forward. The other elements of centralization are geared to start up next year as well, the airport trunking specifically. So we do have a lot of pots in the fire, and moving forward, yes, we were a little shy on our projections this year. We've been developing various enhancements to our delivery system, whether it's engineering standards, the specifications, tightening those up to have better projects, which I know has been a council priority to have better quality projects and such. So we're, we're moving forward on those, and if there's any specific questions on any of the projects, I'll be glad to answer those. Craig Dotseth, our utilities manager, is here as well to amplify on any of the utilities, and our city engineer, Charles Andrews, is here as well. Thank you.
I've got a couple. Shimmer Drive reconstruction, I think that was originally started in 2015, is 30% funded, and the overall status is unfunded. Looks like you've got 55,000 in the budget for 18, and you don't have any further funding until '21. Looks like it's going to be about a $2 million project, is that what you're estimating?
Currently, yes.
So I'll just use that one as an example.
Sure.
I guess that was something that was originally brought to council, council approved, moving forward and with the design phase on that?
That is correct.
Okay. So everything here has been basically approved by the council?
That is correct, yes.
So what's your, how do you prioritize? Because I get a lot of complaints on Shimmer Drive.
Absolutely.
So-
How do we prioritize?
Is it not important to Public Works because, you know, there's other things that are going on that are much more important? But I know people I talk to keep asking me, when are you going to do something with Shimmer Drive?
That, those are good questions. I'll, I'll address the Shimmer Drive specifically, the status of that, and then I'll address the prioritization of the project secondly. On Shimmer Drive, when it was originally, came before you as a design project, based on our initial research, we were looking at a rehabilitation-type project for the, the area. Once we started our detailed engineering and design, we realized that it was, it was beyond that, so we needed to go to a reconstruction, which caused us to reevaluate the design with a consultant, which had some time delay in there. Also, as part of the design development, we looked at the drainage issues that were currently occurring at the intersection of Miller, Miller Valley and Shimmer Drive, and needed to acquire some easements to the east, to Granite Creek, which has taken some extra time to do. The owner of the property has been very cooperative, but it has taken some time to get those easements for the, the drainage system in there. So that project is just an example of, once we, we evaluate projects initially for the scope, there are several unknowns, and we try to accommodate those in the initial design. As we move and do our preliminary engineering and more detailed refinements, sometimes we find that we need to do additional drainage improvements, or additional water improvements, or additional wastewater improvements. It's all part of delivering a quality project the first time correctly. So there are times when a design will take some longer time, and that's, this happened to happen on the Shimmer Drive project specifically. As, in terms of our priority of projects and how we determine, there's a number of elements that we utilize. The first one, and not the most important, but it's one of the elements, is the pavement quality index. All the streets in town have our indexed annually. We do have some software that we're getting up and running that will computerize that. We've been doing it manually over the past seven, eight years, which has been quite a challenge, but the software is going to be very helpful in that regard. From 100 being a perfect street down to zero, which is dirt, we, we try to prioritize projects in preservation, which is the upper end, it's very inexpensive treatments to keep the projects good. Rehabilitation area, where there's additional dollars that are needed to bring the street up to a good quality roadway. And then there's the reconstruction areas where the street's completely gone and it needs to be updated. So that's one element. Another element, we work with, closely with our utilities division on age, condition, maintenance of existing water systems. We have a- We have pieces of our water system that are very aged and maintenance problems. So we look at those issues as we prioritize projects. Similarly, with wastewater, we look at those projects from a system age, capacity, issues that we're having with the sewer system. That is incorporated into the priority system.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
You know what this is? This is a water main we're dealing with in the city of Prescott. The reason I said that because we were compared with the city of Prescott Valley, it's not the same. 100-plus years old, still dealing with them, 40-years-old. Many go to streets, they don't have it, sidewalk, caravan gutter, they don't have it. And up and down, very flat. I just need to bring this and show it to you, that's pretty intriguing.
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Not quite petrified.
Well, you know, I understand that sometimes things go wrong, you know, maybe you have a line break or something, that creates a lot of work.
Yes.
Having to go in and replace it and do the, do the surface work, rehabilitate the area. And those come up unexpectedly and they, they're going to impact your schedule, I understand that.
Yes.
Sometimes I think probably individuals on the council come forward with some additional thoughts on work that could be done on some of the projects, which may cause you to have to step back and maybe look at some of your design and whether or not you have to go back to square one or...
Very correct.
Or you can actually implement that and carry that forward wherever you are in the design phase. So I understand that sometimes you have impacts that you can't really do anything about. All I'm trying to do is just, you know, I know that Councilwoman Orr is pretty worried about Smoke Tree and I notice it's unfunded.
I just wrote down, did you read my note? No.
It's on the list.
No, I just saw you punched up here, so.
No.
I know you've got something to say on that probably. So I just, I'm just trying to understand that, you know, when I see that, you know, we say we're going to spend 63, we spend, you know, 25 and now we're projecting even more money and I understand some of that's going to be due to cost increases.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just trying to get an understanding because I have to explain this to the public a lot of times.
Absolutely.
You know, I had a number of people on Washington Street say, you know, you started two and a half years ago designing Washington Street, you know, when are you going to, when are you going to do the work? And I said, I don't know. So I, you know, I noticed it's unfunded.
Correct.
You know, does that mean it's not a priority for you, so you aren't going to apply funds to it right now and at some point it'll, it'll move up on the list?
Okay.
And you apply funds to it and then I can see that it's being funded and I go back to the people and say, yeah, we're going to be doing, you know, FY '19 or '20 or whatever.
Okay.
I don't know about anybody else, but I get a lot of questions on the street, a huge number of questions.
There's a couple more items that on the prioritization of things I'd like to cover and that we can get into some of those, the funded, unfunded type issues, if that's okay with the council?
Sure.
Okay.
We have a question.
Do you have a question, Councilwoman? I have a question, but I don't know if I'm just agreed to have you go on, but I'm just going to bring it up because I was asked already by the mayor on Shimmer Drive. And I, you said a lot, but I don't want to put you on the spot, Steve, but you still didn't say when it was going to get going again.
Okay. If I finish the rest of the priorities, you'll see why it's out there where it's at right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I will address that.
Then we'll go back to you.
Yeah.
So that was my question.
Yeah, Steve, I asked the last time we were discussing this, as for the PQI for Smoke Tree.
Yes.
I've still not received that. So I'd like to know what the PQI is for Smoke Tree.
I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Some of the other elements that we incorporate into our priorities is drainage. We do have a lot of drainage issues in town. We don't have a dedicated funding source. That's something that we're dealing with right now and how to address that. We do get limited funding from Yavapai County Flood Control District, $600,000, $700,000 a year, but that doesn't go anywhere close to covering what we need. So we're trying to address drainage issues as we look at these projects priority-wise. One of the other council directives that we've heard is that we want to focus on the downtown. We want to have a vibrant downtown, we want to have a quality downtown. So a lot of the projects, as they move up on the priority list, that is a very key element in addition to the operational issues that we look at when we're prioritizing projects. Similarly, tourism, sales tax generation areas that are the lifeblood of the city, we want to have the proper utilities for those services, we want to have proper streets, we want to make sure we have a good impression. And then it comes down to Mark's group is, we'd love to do all these projects right now, but it gets down to funding. And how do we balance funding through the various funds? How do we creatively look at ways to generate income? Most of our projects are enterprise-funded, sales tax, water user, wastewater user, solid waste user fees, to generate the funds that we have. In our wastewater system and to a limited extent in our water system, we've used other loans, WIFA, which you've heard quite a bit about today. There are other types of funding mechanisms that we're starting to talk with finance department about, whether they're bonds or some other types of funding issues, other loan systems other than WIFA. We're looking at how to balance all these competing priorities to put forth a program that works. The reason why some of these projects are in the unfunded categories are not because they're not priorities, they are needed projects in this window. If we had the manpower and the dollars, we'd move all these projects up to next year to, because there is need to get these projects done and there's additional projects out there beyond this list. We're trying to balance all these competing priorities and we're looking to you for guidance. We have only so many dollars. We'd love to address all your wishes for all the projects that you'd like to see done, but we have to try to balance the funding. So that's how we prioritize projects. When we started Shimmer, it was a lower dollar value project, so it was able to try to get moving forward sooner. However, as we got into the design of it, there were more things that needed to be done to Shimmer because it had been degraded so far that it needed to be reconstructed. So the dollars went up and we just had to prioritize the projects with the dollars we had with all these other priorities and it unfortunately didn't make that line.
Councilwoman Orr, did you still have something?
Yeah, it seems like, from looking at the budget numbers, that their money is there, but there seems to be a bottleneck. Is it manpower?
There has been some manpower issues. I did have one of our project managers retire this year, which we have not filled yet. So there is some, some of that is part of this, but a lot of it is just the sheer effort in design to get the projects, quality projects completed. There was a period in the life of Public Works where we would just replace a water line and not think about others, or wastewater line, or just the pavement surface. What we're doing now is we're trying to be smarter with the projects as we've heard direction from the council of, go in once, get it done.
Right.
Go away, don't come back for 20 years, if we can. Very, you know, brief summary of how to do a project. So we're looking more holistically at an area and trying to address as many of these competing priorities on projects to move forward a good system for the city.
Well, I do appreciate the focus on the downtown and what you've, and Bashford Court and...
Yes.
Goodwin and...
Yes.
So...
Mayor Bratton?
Thank you. Mr. Horos, a couple of things that I always keep right up in front and simply because it's roads doesn't change the fact, you know, we have to take into consideration when it comes to priority.
Mm-hmm.
Traffic count, public safety, the exposure to the entire community versus the priority. When you have a road with 80,000 trips a day versus a road with two, it's huge. So priority has always got to be given for those types of things when, when, when we only have X amount of dollars to use.
That is correct.
There have been certain things in this community that have happened. Well, I remember one in the downtown where we had a sinkhole created, all right? You couldn't, you couldn't wait because it wasn't on the top of the list, you had to fix it now.
Correct.
Because the exposure was too high.
Yes.
You have the same kind of issues all over the city. So just sharing with you, I appreciate you bringing in the wood because we don't ever know where the wood is, all right? We don't know where the tile is. We don't know any of these things sometimes till somebody gets underground. None of us have the ability to see what's down there until we dig it up. So just, you know, you might want to talk about the public safety issue when you try and talk about prioritization and what in the exposure level to the entire community. If we don't take care of some of these things first, it doesn't matter whether they're number one, two, or 45, if this community is exposed, you've got to fix it.
Correct. And that's one of the key things with our utility system. We are very aware of and that's very high on our list of making sure we have a quality water or a quality and safe water system and wastewater system.
I remember one time up there on Bradshaw, we had a site distance relationship that the engineer said we had a problem. Once you sat right here in front of God and country and told everybody we got that, you can't just sit here and not go fix it.
That's correct.
Right? Hence the stop signs. Slow that traffic down, take care of it right now.
Yes.
Went right to the top of the list.
Mm-hmm. That is correct. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka?
Thanks, Mayor.
Steve, back on Shimmer, I noticed that in FY '18, there's $55,000 and then in FY '21, there's $30,000. What are those?
The $55,000, a very good question, Councilman Shishka. The dollars that are allocated for next year was to get the project up to a 90% level, which is a, almost ready to go out to bid. The, as we were working through the budget, we were looking at FY '22 as possible funding for the Shimmer Drive project, which is the first unfunded project. Late in the game, as we were working with the finance department to try to balance our funding, that did move out to unfunded. That was right at the bottom of the list and that $30,000 that's in '21 could probably move to '23 or at some point in the future because that was to get the project restarted, finish the design, get it out to bid and then have the $2 million for construction.
Okay. And another, I mean, Shimmer Drive is extremely important because...
Absolutely.
You know, it's becoming more and more of an arterial and I agree with the mayor. I've got people asking me all the time about Shimmer Drive. I'd like to talk about the downtown, McCormick.
Okay.
Between Goodwin and Gurley. I noticed that that is not even, it's on the list, but it, there's nothing down for it past even up to '23. Because we're so concerned with downtown, shouldn't that have a higher priority? And the next thing I'm going to say is that, and this may be a traffic engineer situation, but there's a left-hand turn lane and then there's a right-hand and a straight lane right there at Gurley Street coming off of South McCormick.
Yes.
One of the problems that I've run into twice is that I've been in the right lane, the lane that you can either go straight or turn right. I've been in the right lane, I go straight, the guy coming south on McCormick thinks because I'm in the right lane, I'm going to turn right. So he, he turns left thinking I'm going to turn right. There's almost been two accidents that I've been in right there. So since we're not dealing with South McCormick for the foreseeable future, how can we get that taken care of and marked appropriately and so that there are no accidents there?
Okay. Two-part answer to that commentary and question. We'll pass that along to our traffic engineer who's not here today, but we'll, we'll have an answer for you through Mr. Hash here shortly on how to, what to deal with, how to deal with that left turn issue and the right turn issue there and the through movement. As far as the construction of South McCormick, we have, the project is well under design right now, it's close to that mid-level design. We're going to be finishing the design next year in FY '18. The water line has got some coordination with the Goodwin project that's right there as well and that's moving forward to do that construction first ahead of the Summit McCormick and Beach area around Charlotte Hall. And then we'll be well into construction in '20 and '21 and be done in '21.
Thank you.
So it is a little bit sooner, a little bit.
Steve, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, I try really hard to balance the technical expertise you guys have with the political reality...
Yes.
...that everybody faces and things like Shimmer, it almost is if you're really not going to fund something for five to seven years, by doing design, you give this unrealistic expectation it's going to happen in a timely manner. And in some ways, I wonder if that's a political decision that maybe you don't do design until further along because I do think the public thinks if you do design, then you're going to have the construction and it's not going to be five to 10 years out.
Right.
Do you think that's a fair point?
And I agree with the city manager on that because I think some of the people I've talked to, particularly when they knew if something was approved for design back in '14 and '15, there's an expectation that something's going to happen probably less than two years, you know?
Yes.
And when it turns out to be four or five years, you know, that's when we start hearing from and we want to know what's going on. I agree with you totally on the fact that we don't want to do rework. I know there's areas that, right there at Fair Street and Gurley, we did a major amount of work in there.
Yes.
That thing was the smoothest turn lane that you could ever get into and then it wasn't a month later, they were in there digging it back up. And, you know, we don't want to do rework.
No.
We want to try and do everything you can at the same time.
Yes.
I guess a question I got for the city manager is, if you're so far behind, I mean, I'm looking at some here that, you know, go all the way back to '15 and '14 and they're 30% funded. Maybe we need to look at moving some of this funding because if we're not, if we're only doing, saying we're going to spend 65, we only spend 25, maybe there's some flexibility there to go ahead and look at having some of that design work contracted out, try and move it along and get further along and, and see whether or not we can actually bring it to construction.
I certainly want to, what is a realistic capital plan and, Henry, you could allude to whether you think what you've proposed is viable for '18, do you think you can bring it in?
Yes, thank you. If I may, I want to answer some of the questions there. As far as Shimmer, we're going to look into it, but we just had a public informational meeting on other projects, there was three years down the road, people ask about the road condition. In the meantime, you know, with this new thing, we are not going to leave the road alone. We are going to do maintenance. In fact, Ms. Bobby King just said that on Shimmer, we are actually go, our street maintenance, they are going to maintain it, do something to make it last long and look better than it is. There are several comments came up. Councilman Emerson, you were right on the point, I really agree about the volume and the safety issue. Sometimes the priorities change. What we are talking to you today may not necessarily be the case in three, four, six months and we'll come back to you with a change. Because we have a street that's scheduled for three years from now and we have had this recently, we have a water main break. Okay, we go fix it. Two weeks later, we had another water main break, 200 feet away from it. Then we had another one, 150 feet away from it. The message is, it's time to replace that water main before you have more problem. So when you do it and then there is sewer and you open it, oh, then maybe you should do the whole project together. See, that was scheduled for three years, but we can't delay it, so it comes up on a priority. Councilman Shishka, I also agree with you as far as it is your philosophy, mine, it's ours, focused on downtown. I have same questions. Why certain thing of McCormick is down the road? I think we need to take a good and hard look at it. I had the same question also for Gurley, they're the heart of downtown and we just simply don't have enough money, but maybe we need to take a second look on it. But Mr. Mayor, I mean, we talked about the 20 million, but in about 30 to 60, 70 days, we'll be committed to what, about close to 50 million?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, it's not 20 million, it's 50 million by the end of this fiscal year or shortly after. I just want to explain that.
Okay. Well, if it happens, that's great.
And the last thing, I really appreciate the fact that you all, you talk to people, and obviously they have questions, good questions for you, and it's our job to provide the answers for you so you can provide it to clients. So, please, at any time, you know, more often than not, when people come to us with comments and questions, they're really good comments and questions, something that perhaps we just didn't think about it in the past.
Go ahead, Steve.
I know you guys thought I was, you thought I was sleeping on that.
Yeah, I did. I didn't even think you were around anymore.
Why don't, why don't we, I just a question to ask, I know it's probably going to sound a little ridiculous, but on some of these roads like shimmer, where we know they have water sewer issues underneath, we know that they're not fully funded. You know, I can go back in the day where we had AB water trucks and a grader. Why don't we tear the asphalt out, fix the underground, keep it bladed and watered until we have the money?
Well, I think when they went shimmer, there's a lot of underground springs in that area, so I don't know. That might confuse things a bit, complicate them.
I look at, like I say, I look at Summit, Summit Street over there by the Methodist Church, that concrete nightmare's been there forever. And from my standpoint, I think we could be a lot better served to tear it out of there and have a blade hit it every day and keep it watered and get our underground and everything done, and then let some contracts out for paying as the money comes along.
You want to comment on that, Steve?
Not really, but I will.
They're thinking about your comment.
Yes. Councilman Blair, very creative approach to trying to address our road system and our funding. One of the things that we would take your direction as a council, if that's the direction that you would like us to go, we're glad to do that, although we would highly recommend not doing that because of the drainage, monsoons, snow. A lot of issues will be more prevalent if we leave a street in a base condition. So, it would probably be better to do, move a project. If shimmer is a priority for the council, we could look at what projects that we have currently in there that we could say, well, we could swap out this one for that one and move shimmer up. That's why we're here today, is that this is our best guesstimate based on the priorities as we see them, but we do take direction from council as far as overall priorities go of what projects we want to deliver. So, that could be thing-
I would suggest that shimmer be moved up. It's been on set forever. We have a rodeo ground that's now being used more. It's been refurbished. That road is not going to see less traffic. It's going to see more traffic. It's an absolute nightmare, and I think it needs to be addressed.
I guess one question I would have too is, the list you have here is not a prioritized list, right?
No. This list here is by dollar amount.
Okay. City manager, I think this listing you provide to us is good. I'd like to continue to see that in the future. Maybe we could even have this thing designed where it would have the priority of the street project, so we know what you folks consider to be, you know, number one, number two, number three, and then if we feel that, you know, based on the input we're getting from the public, that, you know, something might be too far down, we can work with you and try and move it up.
I think that's a reasonable request, and I'm sure that Steve and Henry will be glad to put that together.
And, Mr. Mayor, really, this is one of the reasons we are here today. We're presenting all of, to you, some of them, we don't have much of a choice for a variety of reasons, but something like shimmer, you talk to citizens, if in fact that's the case, we can try to take a hard look, see if we can bring this up. I just want, and you also brought up, I forget, an issue about the design. I agree with you. You're correct. We don't want to design something that's construction is five years down the road. Absolutely gives a false impression. But we do want to have a lot of projects in the design, what has been the cause of delay in the past. We decided to do a project. We didn't have a design. That could be anywhere from a year or more. So, we want to be ahead of it. We want to have project design, but not necessarily something that's going to be done five. We absolutely agree, and we're going to try to make some changes and correction. So, we want to have the design two years ahead of schedule.
Another thing on this listing, maybe there could be a couple other data elements in here. You know, I just heard that planned to be 90% completed with the design on shimmer, I guess this year.
Fiscal year '18, yes.
Okay, yeah. And, you know, maybe that would be helpful, so I could say to people, well, you know, they plan to be done with design within a year or something like that, rather than it just being here FY '15 and it's only 30% design, you know?
Yes.
And I don't know what to tell them after that.
Absolutely.
Maybe there's some other data elements that would be beneficial to keep us informed on what's going on.
And some of the target construction years were based on the funding allocations that we had in these slides. So, that's, some of these target completion dates are for construction are based on what we've came up with this on these schedules.
Mr. Mayor, two things that I think would be helpful. I really sound like Leonard Cohen, don't I? Hallelujah. All right. You know, when you guys make policy directives like focus on downtown and staff runs with it, it'd probably be good to go to the next level and say, how do you, how do you see focus on downtown playing out over a three-to-five-year period of time? Is it the end-all, be-all of what we do? Is it 75% of the projects? You know, some balance on that. It's the same thing with the centralization. It is a priority, you guys, but is it enough of a priority to raise sewer rates 60 to 70% over a four-year period of time? I pretty much know what the answer to that is. So, getting to that second level would really provide staff with a little bit more guidance, if that, you guys understand what I'm trying to say?
I think we do. It's going to go up 70%. We're going to get a lot of calls.
I understand you real good, Michael, and understand I have an affinity for downtown. I'm down there, okay? But on the other hand, most people that are driving in the downtown area are driving at a rational speed. When you have people driving in on Willow Creek, or you have people driving down Bradshaw, or you've got people driving here, 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 Ross, or whatever the case would be, doing 40 to 60 miles an hour, and you've got a road problem, you've got a road problem. It needs to be fixed from a public safety perspective. When you're here again, when you've got that many people pouring in on those arterials into the community as a whole, and you've got a road issue, it needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed sooner than later.
I agree with you.
So, city manager, can we clarify, or can you clarify for me, the idea of raising our rates 60, 70%? That is for centralization, not streets.
That's correct. That's for centralization.
Not streets, okay.
And I was talking about projects in their totality in the Public Works Department. I was using those as examples of more guidance, more direction, more understanding from the politicians to staff would give us a better idea of, how realistic is this? I mean, yeah, we need it, but I know the political will's not going to be there to do that, and I don't blame you. So, we shouldn't be operating under the assumption it's doable, because at the end of the day, it's probably not.
It almost seems like we should separate these two. I know that they work together, but centralization is one thing, streets is something else. And, you know, bringing them together is kind of muddying it for me to look at this whole list, and there's all kinds of lots of different things in here besides streets.
Another thing too, I think maybe you don't have all the information when something comes to council, but I think if we would have known centralization was going to have such a high fee increase, we might have asked for you to go back and get some, you know, show us that you can do this on a longer timeline, so we aren't going to raise a fee so dramatically.
Phase it over a longer period of time, start it later, those kind of things.
So, if we'd have known that ahead of time, I'm not sure we would agree on centralization.
Been in this place that way, yeah.
So, I think it's kind of a two-fold street.
I agree with you. Okay, yeah.
I liked your comment on, you know, downtown and taking a look at what we approve and going to the second level. And I'll just bring it out here, even though we've probably talked about it other times, but Alarkin Street, I know right now, I've talked to people that are very concerned about the design on that, whether or not it's actually going to work well. Councilwoman Wilcox, we talked to somebody, and I guess it was one of the people actually doing the construction work. I don't know what his qualifications were or hers, but anyway, they indicated that they didn't think that the design was going to be workable for water flow or management of water in that area. So, you know, sometimes when we have a very new design, maybe the best idea is to space them out and make sure that the design is going to be functional the way we think it is before we go on and do it again someplace else. Because I, I've gotten a lot of complaints on Alarkin, I think, from people just driving by it, I don't even live there or drive on it, from people that actually live on it, and of course, people on the next street over, that Marina Street, that actually have businesses there, are very worried about, you know, after they saw Alarkin, exactly what it's going to be like for them. So, I don't know. Sometimes maybe there's some, it's a good idea to space some of these out and make sure that, you know, maybe people forget how bad it was on the previous street.
[laughing].
Yeah, exactly. Anyway, just an idea.
I think it's probably a good idea.
So, are we, are we done on streets right now? And does everybody want to gut this thing out, or do we want to come back Sunday for Mark Woodfield?
Michelle is willing to bring in lunch if you need it.
Well, and, you know, and I know, like we were saying, they get to be long days, but again, this is a $233 million Public Works six-year plan here. So, I hate to cut the conversation short. I mean, all this stuff is here. Again, just to address some of the questions that came up, we do have streets separated from centralization, which is separated from other Public Works projects. So, this is, this slide, Slide 18, is just the centralization, if council wants to address that. The others, the previous slide is the other Public Works utility and solid waste projects. And then, of course, the streets projects are Slide 14 and 15. So, I guess I leave it to the mayor. And this is just a summary, just to kind of roll it up on Slide 19, the $233 million. 71 million of that is in streets, you know, 73, or 72.3 is in wastewater. That includes 45 million in new debt, which is what we talked about, raising those fees. So, I don't know if council, like you said, wants to continue today or wants to schedule or continue this to tomorrow, or what.
Councilwoman Or.
Well, I would just like to, we've been talking about staffing all along and how we're not increasing staff. We've done a couple of reclassifications. But looking at the Public Works, we're increasing staff on the engineering area from 17.7 to 21.7.
Again, that has more to do with just moving people-
From other areas that have come in here.
From other areas of the city. Yeah, it's all part of the-
So, we're not adding that many engineers.
We did a lot of reorganization this year. There's no new bodies citywide, it's just moving them from different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think right now, one of my concerns is, there's a lot of money here.
Yeah.
I think we have to be good stewards of the taxpayer and fully understand what's going on, and I don't think we should shortchange the system. So, I don't know whether or not there's a possibility we could get back together tomorrow or maybe next week and continue this. Have you got any ideas there?
I think we can post for tomorrow because we're a little late, but we could probably continue this meeting tomorrow.
What about the dialogue next week, Tuesday?
Yeah, next week. It's up to-
You know, we're not on the gun from an advertising perspective and nailing this down. I almost think that maybe you guys, if you feel any bit like I do, might be a little burned out after two days. If this could go into next week and it worked for people's schedules, we could pick a day to try to do this next week.
Well, I'm going out of town, but that's fine.
Oh, you're leaving town.
I would like to go ahead and do the airport if, I don't know how long that might take.
What time do you think you need for the airport? Another 20, 30 minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, step on up.
Billy, when are you back? Is the mayor gone?
I know you got all your airport supporters here, so you want to get them while you got them captured.
All right. So, we'll go through the airport here real quick. Slide 21, please, if you could, scroll down to there. This is the airport by operating area. Again, we have a few things I just want to talk about. You see some big increases in the internal charges. Oh, let's start at the top, I guess. Personnel decrease, that was related to the elimination of the economic initiatives position that was 25% charged to this budget, so that's related to that. The supplies and the other services, there are some changes there related to when we get to internal charges. Those are the facilities, almost 95,000 of that, 243 is related to the facilities that the airport had added to the facilities fund for maintenance and janitorial and those type of things. That's why there's such a big increase there. 45,000 of that is fleet services related. And then there's, the airport is approximately 1.3% of the city's overall budget, so there's administrative allocations for the manager, the clerk, the council, all those things, the legal department as well. There's a finance charge related to the billing that we do for them, as well as the audit that we conduct with the outside auditor for them and the fees associated with that. The internal charges also include their portion of insurance costs for the insurance that is covered for the airport, which is relatively a significant component. With that, this is just kind of a roll-up. And then, of course, Mr. Cox is here to talk about some of the capital. But you can see the revenues are relatively flat with a 1.6% increase overall. There are separate operational issues that are worthy of discussion. We've talked some about it, but ARF, the fire department response out there is charged to the airport because it's a service level above standard services provided to the rest of the community, so the airport does pay for that. Again, airport personnel, supplies, and internal charges are on the other slide that we talked about. That brings us to an operational loss or shortfall, if you will, of almost $400,000. And then we have the grant funding from the FAA grants shown at the bottom with the capital project budget, which is detailed on the next few slides, with the city's match of that of another 322. That brings us to the $717,000 transfer in or subsidy from the general fund, and the 20,000 is included in that that comes from the bed tax. That was discussed the first day. The mayor had some questions or comments of, you know, why is the general fund subsidizing the airport? And that just has to do with council direction in the past that the general fund would subsidize the operational shortfalls out at the airport. So, I don't know if we want to talk about that or get right into the capital slides.
Question about facility rentals, why that went down 7.6%?
Mayor, Councilmember Wilcox. There's actually, there's been some decrease in the actual value of some of the facilities that the city owns, and it's just due to ageism and maintenance that the value of the square footage, say, for example, went from $12 a square foot to $8 a square foot for some of the facilities.
But we are renting out at market value?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Correct. Good point.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox. The next two, Slides 23 and 24, show the capital grants are separated from the non-grant capital. And as we get to these, again, kind of like centralization and the other stuff, if we look at Slide 24, significant impact on the tax base that we talked about yesterday in the general fund. You know, 12 million needed from the general fund over the next six years for the non-grant related projects. So, again, timing on those, other funding sources, creative ideas of partnerships with private industry, all those things, obviously will need and do need to be looked at. With that, Mr. Cox.
Yeah, I did want to make a note in here, there aren't a lot of the capital items identified at this time, and it's due to the fact that the city of Prescott recently approved a master plan. And per the FAA and ADOT, the results of the master plan will really identify strategic planning for any capital projects over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. So, really, we've scaled down quite a bit in regards to- So really, we've scaled down quite a bit in regards to grant-related, ADOT grant-related, and FAA-related projects until the completion of the master plan and the region has had a chance to view each of the facility's needs and vet through the entire planning project before the FAA is and ADOT are willing to partner with the city for future developments. So that is actually the second line item there, page number 57, the airport master plan. That is the second phase. And again, that's federally and state grant funded for the remainder of that project. The open house, the future open house is planned for the end of July, the first week in August, and there'll be another open house again in the fall to review the master plan, not only the facility's needs, but also some the funding opportunities. The third item, Airport Pavement Maintenance Program. The pavement maintenance program is really a grant with ADOT. It's a 90% ADOT-funded and 10% locally funded for pavement maintenance. And as everybody knows, we have quite a bit of pavement in runways, taxiways, aircraft aprons, and ramps. And the ADOT at this time is finishing up a study, a full-blown pavement study, an analysis that we, it has no cost to the local community as they do that for all airports statewide. And they'll be providing us with that result, and based on that result is what their strategy is for pavement maintenance programs. What we have programmed in for this year is $350,000 for various sections of pavement. And that is, again, that's 90% state-funded, so the local share is about $35,000 for that. That pavement will be utilized by not only United States Forest Service, our airline, commercial airline, corporate jets, and general aviation, also the training operations.
You might want to mention also what they do. They only do the preservation part, but they will identify the areas that need rehabilitation or reconstruction.
Yes, correct.
Just like with the streets, you know, we have, what, $6 preservation, 25 for rehabilitation, about 75 for reconstruction. They do the same thing, but they only provide funding to support the preservation part, ADOT.
That is correct. Now, ADOT does provide a 50% local grant match when the FAA provides a 95% grant share. That the 5% remaining is normally divided amongst ADOT and the local communities. I really don't have any other in-depth comments other than line item 59, which is scheduled for this year, is an electric upgrade, really. We've had a lot of failures in regards to some of the navigational aids, and that's a small project. And then item 60, or page number 60, is actually a piece of equipment for snow removal that can also be used for what we call FOD control, which is for an object and debris, and it's really just stuff on the runways. It's just sweeping those things off. So the other items are long-range forecast. I do want to note, a majority, actually, all of these are federally and/or state-funded. So there's quite a bit of grant leveraging with each one of these projects.
Question back on 56. Basically, I think we've done the design on that. We complete?
Yes, sir. That was originally intended for an ADOT grant, which was a 90-10 share, so the local share would be around $200,000. However, there's been some discussion with the FAA in regards to potentially utilizing some discretionary grants from the FAA. In essence, that would increase that to a 95% share from the federal government, 2.5%. So basically, it would be about $50,000 of the local share for that security upgrade. Now, that is not confirmed by the FAA, nor have they offered a grant for that. So until they determine their discretionary surplus, if you will, which will come towards the end of their federal fiscal year, my estimate is August of this year.
Would you think it looks promising?
I believe so. And a matter of fact, we call them shovel-ready projects. We have the design phase complete. The environmental phase through the state process has been complete as well. And what's remaining is basically the invitation for bid for construction. If we do receive, if staff receives notification from the FAA that a grant could be pending, that would give us the authorization, per the city council, to move forward with the invitations for bid. But I would not recommend coming before the council for the invitations for bid results until the grant was actually in hand and we could combine that city council ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
These are actually the projects that are city-funded only. And one of them primary is the economic impact study. If you can see the page 69, the second section there. And I think it's commonly known that the airport and all the stakeholders at the airport are one of the primary contributors into the general fund. And I believe that the economic impact study will will provide that information to the local and the regional delegates, if you will. So that is a locally recommended for for local funding since these are not federally or state-grant authorized. The third item is page 70, which is a city-owned FAA-operated technical operations facility. That upgrade is really to allow that facility to be ADA-compatible for the per the federal recommendations or for per the federal guidelines. They, we just entered into agreement in the city council last year at this time, approved a 20-year lease extension with them for about $100,000 a year. So the actual revenue over the 20-year period is $2 million, and it's a $50,000 investment in that facility. One item I'd like to make note of, and I've certainly worked with the mayor and Mr. Lamar in regards to the potential for an airline terminal. This is under the presumption that that it is going to utilize local funding. And the first phase potentially scheduled for next year could be the design phase. Fiscal year 20 could be the construction phase. And then fiscal year 21 is the completion of the construction phase, which would include roadway, curb access, and in potential other facilities that associate with the airline terminal. Does anybody have any questions of the highlights?
So John?
Yes, I got. Councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor.
John, understanding that that airports are typically very important to the economic life of the communities that surround them, are they typically also negative revenue producers for those communities?
I'd like to say that most general aviation airports do require some assistance from from external sources. Larger passenger facilities do not, and and it's really that because there's a lot more of a revenue stream that, you know, keep in mind, even the state grants and certainly the federal grants, it's not a tax. The grant is a user fee. So certainly, the more people that utilize the airports, the more user fees become available. So all of the federal and state grants that the city benefits from, those are user fees. The state collects those from aircraft registrations, aircraft fuel sales. So there's revenue that's received into ADOT, and what they do is disperse that out amongst the airports within the state. And the same thing with the federal government. They call them passenger facility fees, which is actually a fee that's on top of every airline ticket sale and and which equates to billions throughout the year. And then they disperse that throughout the national airport system. And so that's why the FAA and ADOT is very interested in investing in the city of Prescott. And that's certainly the challenge financially that the city of Prescott has is is in case, I want to say, in essence, supporting the airport per the benefit of the general fund.
Thank you. Councilwoman Orr?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, I forgot to push my button. John, who's going to do the economic impact study? Are you going out to bid on that, or are you working with Emory Riddle or?
The city council recently approved a firm that is currently doing the master plan, and they have a lot of experience with the master plan. So the recommendation, again, would be to utilize the same firm that's doing the master plan since they have expertise in that.
Well, that'd be really good information to have as we go forward, especially with Jim Robb and all that he's trying to do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good comment.
You know, the questions, comments? And I think we are trying to improve our our lease agreements with various entities out there to get it back up to market rate. We've had a lot of leases that were basically, what, a dollar a square foot or something like that?
Well, the incentive 70s, 80s, and 90s was even to bring companies in, and you're right, to give them a very favorable property rate in order, which which basically enhanced employment here and enhanced companies moving here, building businesses here, which is great for the general fund and the tax base. However, direct to the airport fund, you're correct, it was less than fair market value, and and we're working on those. As those leases continue to expire, we're working on renegotiating those.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that, you know, we're trying to change a lot of what's happened in the past and get to a proper fee structure out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
If there are no more questions or comments on the airport, then we'll await City Manager and Mark Whitfield. Do you have something else?
Well, I was just going to suggest, I mean, since the main discussion that needs to happen, I guess, is Public Works or should happen, is a rediscussion of Public Works. We have tentative budget adoption scheduled for the 15th of June, and if council would like, we could do a morning meeting to talk about the Public Works and make those decisions. And even though the tentative budget would be on that afternoon's agenda, that's the the cap of the budget, and that doesn't impact the fact that you might want to change out a streets project with a different streets project or whatever you want to do there. Or it doesn't include the five-year plan. All that will be considered on the 27th of June. So I don't know if that would be favorable to council to consider that. And if that is the case, you know, we heard, obviously, shimmer, possibly centralization. You want us to go back and look at maybe spreading that out with Public Works to lessen the impact? Is there any other direction you want to give us so we can make that next workshop more productive?
So are you saying you'd like to do the next workshop on the 15th?
I was saying that's an option. I think more of the council will be here then. I don't know who.
Well, I, my personal feeling is I'd like to do something early next week. And if we want to have, you know, more time for them to make any changes, they have that rather than going from one meeting into the next one, and they don't have the chance to actually make the changes.
Great.
That's the way I feel about it.
We'll work on that then to get something going next week.
Do I have a consensus that just try and get another workshop next week?
Mayor, I'm out of town, but go ahead.
All right.
Yeah, any day but Wednesday, Mayor. Any day but Wednesday.
It's golf day.
I haven't played golf in a long time, so next Wednesday, I'm playing golf.
I'm headed to Boston to see my son walk down the aisle.
Okay. Do you want to phone in? I'm just kidding.
Probably not. Thank you.
Next week will be sketchy, but I'll see what I can do.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm also scheduled to be out of town next week, but we do it, whatever your direction is. Couple of things. Shimmer Drive, I think this was a very good discussion, and we certainly value what you say. Our city engineer already contacted some people, and he's telling me that potentially we could do mill and pave, meaning considerably less money. So that would be a bit easier to bring it up. I just want to bring it to your attention. Centralization, again, I didn't want to come back. We can certainly push it back by a few years, and there are so many different sorts of funding and options we have. So it wouldn't definitely not be 70% or anything close to it. We can certainly talk to you and more. But I know you decided to come back next week. What I was going to offer, since you're discussing Public Works, Public Works is willing to buy your lunch if you're willing to stay and finish. We are all here, but I am.
I didn't see a budget line for that. And we obviously need to review the budget for surplus.
Just one last thing, I failed to acknowledge someone. You know, what I like is I like to build depth in our department and personnel, 1, 2, 3, because if someone for a variety of reasons leaves, I don't want the city being in a difficult position. We have made a good progress on that. Person who's doing the job, someone else who knows the job, another person to do that. And on budget, this year, we had someone else, so we have a new person, Erica Lester, who is here. It was her first time to do our budget, very excited, full of energy, very intelligent. Young lady, I just want to tell you, because she was new, she asked so many different questions that drove everybody crazy, but good questions. And she even looked into some of our divisions that are buying dollar pen, and she makes them all to buy 29 cents pen. So you know that. That's why our budget is zero. I want to thank Erica and everyone. She did a good job.
All right. Thank you, and we'll wait your decision on a time next week.
Yeah, we'll look at a calendar.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, this means adjournment. Thank you.
Mark?